Notice hereby given, City Council of the City of Alpine, Texas will hold a regular meeting at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, May 4th, 2021, at City Council chambers located at 803 West Holland Avenue and via Zoom conference in the City of Alpine, Texas. Meeting login details may be found at www.cityofalpine.com for the purpose of considering the attached agenda. The notice is posted pursuant to Texas Open Meeting X Section 551.043, Texas Government Code. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the council on any agenda item termination of a quorum notice of the meeting. Zoom meetings, comments, and question rules and procedures are listed in the city website. Remarks will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please email your name to Gio Caladon, G.Caladon@ci.alpine tex. If you have a petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please email City Secretary beforehand. All names wanting to make public comments for the meeting will be cued upon and given to the mayor at the section of the meeting. The mayor will call those individuals one at a time, and our meeting moderator will take you all to make your comments. This will function the same as our existing signup sheet in council chambers. Please note, you must include your full name first and last, along with what ward you reside in or business interest in. If you do not live or own property in the city, please state that in your email. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any item not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may fill the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The man or city council members may call point two orders to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack elected officials or staff members in a meeting, they may be barred. Now call the speeding tool, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Mayor, we do have a quorum, and the notice was posted at 2:00 PM on April 30th, 2021.
Public comments. Gio, do we have anybody on cue?
Yes, we do. I know that Martin Villarreal is online, and he'd like to make a public comment.
Yeah, and Mayor, we do have several here in council chambers as well. So why don't we go through the online ones first, and then we'll, we'll do the ones in council chambers next.
Okay, sounds good. Gio, you want to go ahead and take, and take them off?
Yes. Hello, Martin, are you there?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, this is in regards to a property. I thank you for, for hearing me. A property that's asking for a special use permit. And my property is 802 East Avenue H. I'm in Ward 4. My name again is Martin Villarreal. And my concern, excuse me, my concern is a property owner in the neighborhood, the potential negative effects this short-term rental can have on my property. Are there regulations in place for the short-term rental? Who regulates the business? Will the rental have adequate insurance to cover losses that may result from occupancy? Is there adequate coverage or sufficient assets available for cover, to cover liability? Short-term tenants won't necessarily have an, an interest in the welfare of the neighborhood as a full-time resident. The short-term renters, the unknown variable, excessive noise, parties trashed, thrown about, and overall disruptive behavior by renters are a potential. Are there occupancy limits to the rental? Is there an occupancy tax imposed on such short-term rentals? And so, and with that said, I object to the, to the special use permit for a short-term rental in, in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Villarreal. Okay, city manager.
Yeah, so here in the council chambers, and we have a lot of people that have signed up to make comments. Some of you want to make comments on the public comments, and some want to make specifically on the action items. So maybe just if you could raise your hand, and I'll have you come up for those who want to make comments right now on the public comments. So Carl?
I think the city just gun in considering approval of condition of this permits for the red light was there to be without going through the financing itself. The ordinance regarding just there may need to be moved so that the city is not approving something that may illegal according to the ordinance. Section 2, R1, A, single-family dwelling. Number 8, accessory buildings or accessory, or accessory use, customary incident to the use, not including the conduct of a business located on the same lot, including a private garage, one or more cars, fortified servants, not for rent, or used for personal purposes. There are quite a few small concessions that were built for students, but some also didn't have doors that they have now. And these, some of these now may be used, or may be used for federal purposes. And I think if you look at for them.
Thank, thank you, Carl. Anybody else? Karen? Mayor, we have Karen Cantrell next.
My name is Karen Cantrell from Ward 3, and I want to talk a little bit about last city council meeting when we talked about the noise. Along the ordinances. Let's go. Section 94-31, motor vehicle required. Motor vehicles shall be equipped with a motor in good working condition and continually operate to prevent excessive or unusual noise. B, a person may not use a motor cut out, bypass or similar delays on a motor vehicle. And we're going to skip down to section 94-33, excessive or unusual noise. No person or vehicle shall emit excessive or unusual noise on highways or streets. Just to clear it up, Texas Transportation Code says that a motorcycle is a motor vehicle. Moved here from Dallas to get away from noise, part of the beauty out here is the silence and solitude. That's what you said, Thor. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Anyone else? All right, Mayor, I think the rest of the comments will, will come during the course of the, of the meeting for the particular action items, okay?
Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on. Let's go to presentations. We have none. Reports, I don't have a report. City attorney, I think you have a couple of items.
Yes, I have a couple of items. There, I was approached a week or so ago, I think, by Gio. Apparently, there's a city street here, Avenue K, is that correct, Eric?
Yes.
My internet went down, I wasn't able to print out what I needed to today. Apparently, it's an old street that's not used by the city. It's got like a steep grade on it. It's real hard to, I think, maintain. And I was asked to look into it. We are, the City of Alpine is a home rule municipality, and as a home rule municipality, we can, we can close a public street if we want to. You don't have to go through any kind of formal things like you do in a general municipality where you'd have to give the landowners notice, things like that. And there was a case law that looked at a couple of things. One of them was whether it's being used by a large number of people, whether you're able to maintain it safely and, you know, in a manner that it can be maintained. And I believe that from what I've found on this, you're going to be able to close that road without any trouble. I, you were talking about maybe getting a survey, but I'm not sure that you're really going to need that. But you can just abandon it, is what they call it, abandon or close the road. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so Sandy, I think one of the things that the city needs to look at is if it chose to abandon it, which is, as you say, not an issue. Are the adjacent property owners, if there are adjacent property owners, what tends to happen around here, people migrate onto it? And then 10 years down the road, when they put their property up for sale, they tend to include that land as part of what's being sold. We've had to work a number of cases in the past in council, they'll work their way through, and Eric's had to work that way. So I, I just think it's going to be important to recognize, well, the city certainly has the right to go do that. When someone starts encroaching upon it, then the city probably wants to understand what the action is, so we don't get into a position of someone believing it's part of their property in part itself.
Correct, and you might even want to approach the, the adjacent homeowners and see if they're, they want to take it over or whatever.
Yeah, and if we've done that in the past, we'll be able to take it over. Then we get the survey, we go off, do the assessment, we sell it.
Yes, and do something like that.
So the question came up because on Avenue K, right there, as you're coming, coming, going south on 118, there's a home up 100 feet up off Highway 118. The access to the home used to be through cock roll. And then they built out a garage or outside workshop that cut off the access to cock roll. The person, we know the person's on the wall over there that owned the property. So sometime during his ownership, Avenue K was opened. The problem with it is, it's so steep, we can't get our normal equipment up there to work on it. It's pretty narrow, too. And so that was part of our thought is, it, it would be better for us to abandon, because we try to advise, you know, if you just have your normal car traffic going up, the road will hold firm for a while, but not a lot different than our conversation with the Country Club Estates. You know, you start putting that heavier traffic, the, the UPS, the FedEx trucks, it really starts running that out. The neighbor at the bottom is a little concerned because he's worried that somebody could beer off into his yard. And then that got us thinking, there are a couple other properties in town that we haven't, that are adjacent to roads that we haven't opened. And we have some concern over our obligation to open them relative to development, because it could impact traffic flow. And so we, you know, we want to make sure from a city perspective, whether we close a street or not, we're, we're within the confines of, of the law.
So is the thought then we go ahead and abandon it, which is fine, but then get someone to buy it?
Right, so then, then go through and talk, now that, that we know that we can abandon it, talk to those three adjacent property owners. Go through, do the survey. It's not a, a high dollar, I mean, it's not, not much value to it, but then they could maintain it as a driveway or whatever, whatever they want.
And, and this is under the Texas Transportation Code, which sounds like weird. It's 311.001, and that's because it's a street. So we do have the authority to abandon it, however the city wants to proceed. You know, I would say probably that homeowner may want to buy that or something like that. But we can abandon it without going through that big notice procedure that's required as far as general municipalities. So as far as that, it can be abandoned. The next topic is, there was, I think we had a little issue with we're working, it's going to hook up the water lines, I believe, for the city, for the Alpine Independent School District. And I believe there was some concerns about, there was a, I got a letter from Elizabeth Nelson wanting to let their people hook up the water to the city's lines so that they could try to save money. And because we were, of course, if the city does, the city's going to build, that's correct. And they were wanting to kind of bypass that little legislation. Well, they can't bypass it. If you look under, I did some research on it, if you look under chapter 290, it's subchapter D of the Texas Administrative Code. You've got to have anybody that taps into a main hall, a main water line of the city, because you've got to keep that line pure. You've got to, you're required to hold Class C operator's license, and you're also required to do certain procedures through the Texas, it's TQ, what is it called?
TCEQ.
TCEQ, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. So we've got that set up here with the city to do that. And my recommendation on that, it's much safer for the city to do. It may be a cost that this construction companies, you know, doesn't want to take on, but I believe that that, that, that administrative code and the requirement under TCEQ gives the city the right to do that, because it needs to be done properly. And I think you're going to have to cut through a road anyway to get to that, is that correct?
Highway 118.
Yeah. And, and the attorney was complaining that we weren't taking, we weren't timely, I guess you could say. But the time that the request came through, I believe six members of the city of Alpine got COVID, and they were the members that were involved in this. So it really was timely for us, because they had to be out. But I believe that's the proper way to do it, is the city's going to wind up doing it, and they're going to, they're just going to have to take that charge, because that's the safest procedure for the city water line.
Yeah, and on the, on the timeliness side, we did get that quote out, right, as the majority of us got back from COVID. And actually, I checked with Scott this morning, and we still have not received any commitment back from them to, to go ahead and make the payment and start the tap. So I, I'm a little bothered by the timeliness. If it was that important, they would have come in the next day and, and made the deposit and charged forward. But, you know, we, we certainly know there's a lot of stuff going on at that school, but, you know, we, we work very quickly. We also want to make sure we protect the public water supply. We also, when we're working with other jurisdictional or other government entities like Tech dot, we've got to ensure that that work is done to their spec. I think Counselor Sondat would agree on that, too.
You had to board under easy state, how were your?
Yeah.
So I don't know, it changed.
Yeah, this is, this is one that's going to require a, a hot tap. So we're going to actually tap in to live service. If we shut it down, it could, it could take that whole quadrant down for anywhere from 20 hours to, to 48 hours, which we don't really want to do, so.
We don't want our citizens to be without water for that long, and, and a hot tap's going to require special procedures. And I think the city shouldn't be the one doing that, since it's our water supply, that's, because that's our fresh water, so.
Well, yeah, that, that tap beats the whole, a lot of Ward 1, it beats a lot of Ward 5.
Yes.
I've been out there with the guys who don't have that. I don't understand the issue, they just want to do it on their own?
I think they wanted to cut costs, and they were a little bit snippy when they wrote the letter about us not being timely. But Scott had actually put that bid in before he got sick, and we still haven't heard back. So just, I was maybe a little snippy, too. I don't mind being snippy if I got to be.
Yeah, I've got new water taps put in, it takes that most two weeks, it's not a big deal.
Well, and then we're going to have to get permits to cut through the road, 118 to stay out of it. It takes a little bit of time to get repaired, so. We're, we're assuming they're going to continue to work with, but I've not heard anything back, so let's see. The last deal is, I'm going to go ahead and, and do some addressing on the short-term rental issue, because I know this is going to be a very upsetting. I know there's going to be people here on every side of short-term rental. So when I did my research on it, first thing I did was I got with the city, and I asked them how many rentals are already out there right now, that have already been approved with a conditional use permit. And the city, City of Alpine has what they call R1, R2, R3, and R4 zoning places. R1 is the single-family zone, R2 would be a two-family or so. R3 would be a multi-family zone or apartments, and R4 is going to be for mobile homes. Most of your bigger cities might even have more of those. But at the time, I had Gio pull this on me last week, it looks like every zone that we have, R1, R2, R3, have already had conditional use permits issued to them. Since before either this issue, short-term rentals have been around for quite a while. They've been around for years, and that brings me to my cases. There's three cases out there. I'm not going to go through real in-depth, but I'll be able to answer questions from them. Some of Mr. Villarreal's questions, I think I'll be able to answer with this. The first case that became really big, where these things really hit home, was called Tarve Timberwood Park Homeowners Association. And it was a Texas Supreme Court, this Mr. Tar live in San Antonio, this dealt with HOAs, home, what do they call them?
Homeowners Association.
Homeowners Association. And he was living in San Antonio, but he got transferred to Houston, so he decided to start renting his house out. Well, when the homeowners association got wind of it, of course, they sued him with an injunction to stop. A lawsuit ensued, the fourth district sided with the homeowners, so they appealed it to the Supreme Court. And this happened in 2018. And they, they lost. The Supreme Court said that a single-family residence restriction is merely limited to the structure that could probably be erected upon the track and not the activities that could permissively take place. And they, they based it off the covenant, which is what you do as far as your use of your property while you're in HOA. And then they did not require occupancy by an owner or prohibit leasing, uses of vacation home or short-term rentals. So that started the ball rolling. Now comes along, during the time this was kicking along, there was a City of Austin came out in 2016. This, this Senate General case started in 2012, that's how old this case is, almost 10 years old. 2016 comes out a case out of Austin, they decided to enact an ordinance. Not only were they going to restrict where the short-term rentals were, they were going to completely abolish them by April 1st of 2022. And they limited how many people could be at the residence, and they limited the number of hours that the people could be outside doing stuff. They put a limit on those things. Well, this got appealed up, of course, to the third district of Texas, and they declared a lot of these portions of the short-term rental ordinance unconstitutional. And there is another case right now out there, it's still hanging out there, it is against the City of Arlington. Arlington has come up now, and they're saying, well, they actually came out in 2019, theirs, what they said was, we're going to only allow short-term rentals within a mile of the hub of the city. So if you're in R1 area, you could do short-term rentals, but people in R2 and R3 and whatever other R they have cannot. Well, that's up now before the courts. The, they ruled against them on it, on, on the, the one out of Austin. The one that is pending is still up before the courts for review. It's going to be pretty interesting to see how it comes out, but I'm going to give you a little nutshell, and then y'all can ask questions off of this. Short-term rental properties are pretty much going to be here to stay, so we just need to get used to that. These are the don'ts, these are the things that the City of Alpine is not going to be able to do, because you, we, our constitutional laws trump a lot of this. We have the right to a lot of things. Firstly, we, is citizens have a fundamental right to use their property as they see fit, including short-term rentals. It's not absolute, because your normal ordinances can apply, we'll get to those in a minute. Citizens also have a fundamental right to peacefully assemble or associate. That's in not only the Texas Constitution, but in the United States Constitution. Short-term rentals are going to be, are considered residential by the appeals courts if located in a residential area, and zoning issues do not apply. That's what the Texas Supreme Court said in that for if tar. That I thought was impressive, because I know your issue is zoning. They're talking about the family as a unit as opposed to the buildings, which your zoning deals with your buildings. So that's how the Supreme Court cleared that issue up. Cities cannot, the city ordinances cannot restrict the number of people in a short-term rental or their right to peacefully assemble. So we can't come out here with our ordinance and say, on Avenue B or C, you can only have six people in this place at one time. We can't do that, because you have a fundamental right to be able to do your property the way you want to, to be able to move it, to, you know, take care of it, to sell it, whatever. It's not absolute, but it is a fundamental right. Cities cannot discontinue short-term rentals in areas where they've already allowed permits, because that's one thing that Austin was trying to do, was start down completely. They're not, they said you can't do that. It's called a retroactive clause, and it has to meet very strict burdens, and these ordinances, these short-term rentals do not fit in that. And cities cannot arbitrarily decide who gets a permit and who does not. You've got your regulations with your permits, but what, this is what we can do as a city. We can enforce city nuisance and criminal ordinances of the laws of states, like littering, noise. If someone's fighting outside, all those things can be, can be enforced. We could require short-term rentals to provide insurance, like Mr. Villarreal had a question about, that adequately covers events with a short-term rental. Our ordinance now is a little bit too watered down, I think, for the liability for the city. All it has is that the homeowner signs a release of liability. That's not necessarily going to get the city free of liability on this. So I believe that we need to amend that coming up and make them provide insurance that's adequately going to cover the short-term rentals while they're there. Because we don't want to say someone who causes bonfire out there and burns down somebody else's house, and the homeowner comes back and says, well, I wasn't aware that they were going to do something stupid like that, you know? You don't want that liability issue, if you've got good insurance to cover it. And they do have insurance policies that will address these issues. We need to require that as a city. You can do yearly or bi-yearly inspections of the residences designated short-term rentals with permission of the owner, or if there's some issue that comes up that you feel like you've got to utilize administrative means with required evidence. They also came back and said that homeowners, whether they're living in that house or renting it, have the right to not be free of unreasonable searches and seizures. So a lot of laws are implicated in these, this, these cases. And we require permits prior to the individual utilizing, which is what we need to continue. We need to make sure that we get the receipt from them showing that their hot tax or hotel occupancy tax is paid and showing approved. And then we need to penalize individuals who've not obtained permits prior to utilizing the home, and that's kind of something that can be done. So if you don't do a permit and it's found out you're using it that way, the city can come in and penalize you for that. That is in our ordinance. Another thing we can do is we can put some more restrictive things, like if you've got one particular area that's just having problems after problems, like they're violating nuisance, you know, ordinances and stuff, we can at some point come in there and shut them down, because that's where your right is not absolute. That's where we can come in and say, we have a more compelling interest as a city to protect our citizens and to keep the peace of rest of citizens. But the, the courts are requiring a really high burden. What citizens can do, neighbors can do, they can utilize the city officials and law enforcement, they can ensure compliance with these ordinances and laws. You need to get out there if you feel like something's happening, but you need to approach it the right way. If you don't feel like you're getting anywhere, there's all sorts of people in the city you can call, you can call me as well. Because I'm going to make sure that, that things get addressed with everybody, because everybody's going to have different issues with these cases. And we need to make sure that it's being done right, and nobody's breaking the law to try to get somebody else. You know what I mean? You can't, it's what I always say as practicing as lawyer, you can't break the law to catch a lawbreaker. You can't do it, so. And I think you can attend council meetings on a regular basis and bring up the issues that you have. We need to know what specific issues are happening out here with these short-term rentals, and we need to address them. And the city needs, and the city council needs to be very adamant about addressing these clearly across the board and in a reasonable manner, where everybody's rights are staying the same. Nobody gets special treatment because of where they are. And you, but the thing you have to do is you're going to have to file a formal complaint, because if you're just calling and then not letting them know who you are, and they show up and there's nothing going on that, that's considered, law enforcement has a different standard than you do, probably for noise and nuisance and stuff. They've got to at least have probable They've got to at least have probable cause to be able to warrant writing a warning or a citation. So you've got to be able to stand up and say, I have a problem with this at this point, you know, everybody, everybody's got a cell phone recorded, record. And then when that officer gets there, he's got some probable cause. You can take a picture as you're recording stuff going on. Now, even though it's quieted down, then you've got that issue. And enough of those complaints, the city can come in and revoke that short term rental. I think that's going to be the best thing from my reading of these, these, these laws. Because Supreme Court's the final court in Texas for civil stuff. And the, the one third court, they, they tried a rehearing May 1st of last year. They were shut down by that appeals court because by that time this Supreme Court case was out. And there is another case that I'm telling you, they're going to rule in favor of the homeowners that Arlington can't restrict to one mile within the town. We have inherent rights to own our property and take care of our property. And we have inherent rights to assemble as long as it's peaceful. If, you know, the laws get broken, it becomes not feasible at that time. So that's my interpretation of it. And as the questions come out during the meeting, I'll be more than happy to, to answer some of those and see if we can get any other issues worked out that's going to make this work, it's going to be workable. Because from what the court says, from my reading of the court, short term rentals are here to stay. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, so Sam, talk, talk a little bit about then zoning, which is, as you say, it's the which is short term rental. So if there's a single family dwelling on the property. So the city defines that, but it cannot define. What's, what's the limitation? How does that work from a health safety standpoint? For use of numbers of people in that particular square footage?
The court, the court doesn't seem to care about that. You, you're, because you, you've got a single family using a single, single family home in your R one zones, right? You can probably put a bigger home in your R two zones, right? And then you can put your bigger homes in your R three or several homes, depending on the size of your property.
It's the size of property.
Yeah. And I don't, they say it doesn't affect the zone. They only look at what's, what the person is doing to utilize it. I'll find that case. I don't know. Zoning, the court, and this is the court in, it's C A A T A R I is Atari versus City of Austin. That was out of the third district of Texas. In this, they said, because they were trying to go with zoning violations in that case as well. And that's where they came out and said, for the, set a ban on these street types doesn't advance the zoning interest because they're both owner occupied. As long as that home is residential in nature, your zoning laws shouldn't apply. So if you're in R one, that should only be a residential area, right?
Right.
And R two, so whatever those buildings are, they should already have been built to be a residential of some type. And, and there's no limit on the people as long as they're peaceful. No limit. That's, that's, that's going to be a problem because you have that privacy right. So that's why I think we need to go for some insurance to make sure these guys are insured.
Okay.
But that's how they're looking at it.
Very helpful.
Questions for the attorney?
Oh, all right.
Okay, seen on, thank. Let's go ahead and move to the city manager's report.
All right. Mayor, I have myself and Jennifer and Adalina presenting this evening. I will keep my slides to a minimum so that we can get to Adalina and Jennifer. They're like the dynamic duo. And, and I will say that the two of them do an incredible job for the community. I think the work that they do speaks volumes to our animal control into our environmental services, which are, are two issues that are near and dear to the community. So with that being said, I want to walk through a quick COVID update for everyone. You know, this is a slide that I, I look at most days, mostly focused on the vaccination rates. From where we were a couple of weeks ago, we've only climbed two tenths of a percent. The state itself has not climbed much either. My sense is those that really initially wanted the vaccine have, have sought out and received it. By hoping that we'll see another push as we get into the summer and can push that number up closer to 60%. I think that combined with positive test cases that we've had, then we would be well north of 75%. And then my sense is, what I'm reading and seeing is that come fall, there'll be some type of booster similar to what we see with, with the flu vaccination. So thinking through what, what that means for us locally. Right now, university and schools are preparing for the graduations this month. It's a real positive culmination for many of the students. Our tourism rates continue to climb. Chris and Heather did a nice job outlining that our last meeting. And, and certainly our whole push is, is to continue to support the outdoor activities. And interesting enough, was looking at some data this past week on large vehicle truck and SUV purchases along with RV travel trailers. They have climbed through the roof. In fact, I think car dealerships are loving it because they are actually getting MSRP on the large vehicles, which is almost unheard of. But there is such a glut in the supply. We do see that from a city perspective. We have a couple of vehicles on track for this next year to add to our fleet and it's, it is much tougher to come by some of those. That's a good thing. People are getting out, spending more time. And certainly short term rentals, which is, which is a large topic. They are booming. I mean, people really love this idea of going to a place and, and having more privacy themselves. So all of those are, are really what we're seeing locally. The next thing I wanted to talk about, shifting gears a little bit with some noise language in the city of Alpine ordinances as they are now. And I think Karen outlined relative to section 94 point 33 and point 34 there, where we're really contemplating noise amplification out of vehicles, automobiles, really whatever, you know, Texas code defines as a vehicle. And, you know, it's really specifically looking at excessive and unusual noise on the highways and streets. And this is something that Chief and I talk about consistently. And as we look at, you know, folks who, and I'm not into the, I don't do the hot rod thing. We're adding the modifications to the vehicles. I am aware of it. And I know that that can be a popular thing with car enthusiasts and bicycle enthusiasts. But specifically in Alpine, our, our ordinances prohibit that. So I think to Sandy Wilson's comment earlier, you know, if you have an instance like that, pull out your phone, record it, take a video of it and certainly call our police department and they will help, help you manage through that. The other kind of core section that we, we look at relative to noise from a city perspective is in relation to animals. And that's probably the one that we get the most phone calls on. Excessive barking, roosters crowing, those really barking is, is the biggest issue. But, but roosters, you know, sometimes if you've got one and it's 4:30 in the morning and it starts to cackle, that can be very disturbing.
Or 6:00 PM in my day.
Yeah, or, so the, we do have actually good ordinance language there that addresses. In fact, Jennifer has updated even on the website. She's got a little blurb out there that talks about ways to help address. And we consistently really want to work with home, homeowners and neighbors to have something that, you know, what we don't want is we don't want our neighbors to get in odds with each other. And so we really work hard. And I think Jennifer's team does, does a nice job at that. Switching gears a little bit on the conditional use permitting. There is language in there relative to how we contemplate. And the, the other piece of that is that subsection three, I think maybe Carl had mentioned that in the impacts of noise when offering conditional use permits. And I think with Sandy's comments, one of the, the pieces that's important from a, from a community perspective is that we really think about what are, what from an overarching community perspective is important? And how do you establish noise thresholds for residential areas, for commercial areas? And actually putting DB levels on that similar to the outdoor music ordinance that we were working on last year. And we've just got a couple of things to tidy up. Chief and I just need to go back through that final threshold graph that says, okay, between these hours on the weekend, you've got to be at this DB from 200 feet back. And then on weekdays, what does that look like? I think we need something else that really looks at from a city perspective too. Because if people are running short term rentals at their homes and the noise gets to a level, it may not be a dog barking or it may not be a vehicle that is going on. And so it, it's easier as a city if we, if we put some thresholds in place. So that's, that's some work that, that we really need to go do very quickly through our planning and zoning commission. You know, the other thing I want to touch on relative to noise is, you know, just some of the remediation techniques that we talk about. I mean, first method is always, you know, have a discussion with your neighbors. That method is not always, you know, people don't always feel comfortable with that. We certainly have our police department that can, can engage and work through. I think as Sandy mentioned, how we record that to timestamp it is, is important too. As our police team goes through their work. I personally had a situation, my wife and I did here seven or eight years ago. And not to go into the, the details of it, but we did recordings over about a three or four week period because the dog just kept barking all night long, every night. And that was what ultimately was used to help facilitate making that change with the neighbor. So we have a lot of success stories out there like that. And then of course my slides will, you know, all our slides will be up there after this evening. And there's a hot link on it to animal control. Any questions on noise before I jump into performance bonds?
Usually motorcycles, if they're not parties, aren't excessively noisy. Parties can, I don't know if they're helpful. This next week, we're going to have a lot of motorcycles.
Yes, so we, we certainly are aware of lots of events that come through town. I mean, I think the outdoor, the, the city last year was contemplating because we do have a lot of outdoor music events and, and that was part of the thrust there. And so these are items where, you know, it's certainly important from a community to look at an overarching noise ordinance.
I do have some photographs and some, is this for later?
Yeah, that would be for it. On the next, next topic is performance bonds. And this will come up little part on our, on our audit as well. It came up back in 2016, 2017. We certain government code 2253 dot 20 dot 021 that, that contemplates performance and payment bonds is required. And I'll delve into the issue fairly quickly here. When we contract out work to Jarrett Dirt Works for rebuilding of the streets, the amount that we contract goes over the threshold. And so in order for us to actually have them go through and, and buy a performance bond, it just is a pass through cost to the city. And so what we discussed back in 2016 was, hey, this is work that we can self insure on. And so we, we left it at that. One of the things that I want to make sure we do every year is, is go through this slide that identifies some of the work that can come up during the course of the year. So street paving this year, we're going to well exceed, you know, we've got another 750,000 through Jarrett Dirt Works. But we'll self insure that. Also, the work that we're doing on our city facilities, right? So we're going to do, you know, 80, 90,000 worth of work over at the visitor center with one specific contractor. We are going to self insure that. Because if we don't, then he's going to go out and, and take a $10,000, $15,000 bond. And we're going to have to pay for that. And so we structured, we've now structured all of our contracts that we pay as you go. They don't get all the money upfront. And so there are different elements that they have to, to achieve before they get paid. So if you think about a $90,000 project, they're not going to get a check for 90,000 and then be told go work. Right there, all of our contracts have performance steps. So if they don't meet it, then we don't sign off on it and they don't get paid. And if there's some open work there, we will, we will address it. But just wanted to, to be clear with counsel on, on how we're administrating and working through that. And, and we'll run through this annually during the budget formation time and be able to pick out which projects that we're contemplating. Now, obviously, if we were going to do a big electrical job, 250, $300,000 job. So we think about what we've got to do with the aerator out at the wastewater treatment plant. We can't self insure that. They have to have a performance bond. So that would be one where we would, we would have that performance bond.
Right, Eric, just to help counsel bring in an example of a milestone billing. Milestone billings are very common.
Right.
In the truck industry. So that way at least, and you don't, yeah, you wait till next year. But it just gives an example for counsel to say, okay, now I understand. Because I presume you also got a holdback.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So milestone billing ensures that work gets done, gets accomplished, you pay as the milestone goes and keeps the contract going from a cash flow standpoint.
Right.
And then you've got a holdback, which, you know, typically 10 to 15%. And which is going to be most of their profit is all at risk.
Correct.
Okay, correct.
All right. Well, that's it for me. We've got Adalina up next.
Good evening.
Evening.
So I'm going to do the environmental services update. I just wanted to follow up on our last meeting. There were a couple of questions on the cardboard at the recycling center. And just to update counsel, we started screening better for businesses. That way our containers don't get full within the week. Also, the pantry is getting their own container from TDS. That way they don't have to bring us the cardboard and then kind of saturate our containers. And we have more space for residents. Also, I spoke with John Nelson about the recycling market. He mentioned that it's getting better slowly. The cardboard is going up faster than any of the other recycling items. And what we just need to do in Alpine is keep collecting a clean product so we can take it to recycling easier. And we, we have our products is really clean. Okay, so I'm going to be.
This is what you're talking about clean. This is what you're talking about clean cardboard. Does that mean you can leave tape on the boxes or you gotta take the tape off?
They haven't said anything about tape. They, the only thing they they don't want is those huge staples. Labels or tape, they haven't said anything. I always take them off of mind, but I don't know. I don't know if that's something that we should recommend just to make it easier.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna be talking about the recycling center stats. The Alpine High School Demo Project, our Coconut Park Lodge, Coits Grove Projects. Keep Up and Beautiful Updates, our green space at City Hall. And our HAW Pilot Collection Event coming up this weekend. Okay, next slide please. So this one is just the total visits to the recycling center up to March. It, we're still 59% city, 41% county. With an average of 275 Alpines residents and 190 county residents. Next slide please. These are the total drop offs between October to March of all the items we take. Our staffing, we we only have one staff position field for the recycling tech. We have posted the second position at the city website. The next part of the slide is a quarterly book pickup totals up to April 2021. We have 22 tons and bulky trash approximately and 6.71 scrap metal. That's what they take out of the trash and actually bring down the bulky weight down. Any questions on this slide?
You had a nice jump from first quarter to second quarter on the bulky trash. Yeah, and the metal certainly.
Yes. I think, I think it's people, residents are getting used to us going back to our ordinance and everybody's calling in to schedule pickups. Our next quarterly pickup will be July 2021. So we are gonna start scheduling July 5th through the 9th. And then the pickup will start July 12th. Next slide please. These are the landfill numbers. For CND and MSW. And the two bottom charts show the remaining tonnage, well, the current and remaining for each of the items. The CND and MSW. Next slide please. These, these, these two charts show plastic tin, aluminum and mixed paper totals up to March 2021. Next slide please. This one is cardboard, scrap metal and brush. Next slide. The total recycled from September to March 2021 was 20, 280 tons. Any questions on this slide and the previous slides?
Yeah, that that diversion, hey, Adalina, just so everybody kind of understands. That normally we're permitted for 20 tons a day. So that diversion there, right there saves us 14 days. Through through midyear, so we're we're saving almost a month of our utilization. Just on people taking the time to recycle on their own. So that's, it's a real tribute to the citizens.
Yes. Okay, on our last meeting, the council asked for the demo project numbers. Here is the, here are the graphs for, they have two construction companies. They have taken 89 tons and 19 tons. So a total of 180 tons to the landfill. Some of the stuff they're recycling on site and other stuff is being diverted. The clean stuff is being diverted to other areas in the county. Any questions on this information? Okay, so we started Coconut Park Lodge, Coits Grove Projects. We hadn't had the interlocal agreement with Sora, so we started on our rain gardens. I showed the council a map, I don't have a map at this presentation, but there's one located north, North Hendricks. And one by the pool area in the parking lot. We are almost done, we just need to install a water fountain and wildflower seeding. And then we, we can do a final project presentation. Our interlocal agreement with Sora, our verbal agreement was February 5th. So we have moved on with our projects in the area in Sora's property. We're working on our pilot project, the ponds east of Coconut Lodge. We're gonna send effluent and see how the ponds react to the water. If they keep hot water, they hold water. And what we want to do is do like a riparian restoration, bring birds back, bring little animals back to the area and kind of make a green space for the residents. We're trying to install the effluent pipe between May and June 2021. Our grassland restoration, we had our, our meeting this morning. And we figure out the next steps at starting this, this section of the project. We're gonna start with mosquito scrubbing removal. And then we're gonna finalize quotes and funding application through the Rio Grande Joint Venture. The quotes, we don't, we can't get them at this point because seeders have run out of seed from last year, so we have to wait till they bring their stock back up. But we'll have them by end of March and May. And we are considering planning by June. And our next part of meeting will be May 6th this week at 5:00 PM. Next slide, any questions on this? Oh, this is our timeline, the current timeline for these projects. We are April, June. Column. Do we have any questions on on this, on the coconut projects?
I have a question about the previous slide.
Yes, one quick question.
She shows a water fountain in the desert, really?
No, it's a drinking water fountain, I'm sorry. It's gonna be a human and pet drinking water fountain. Okay, this next slide is just an update for Keep Up and Beautiful. We have been recognized as Gold Start affiliate. And what this does is opens up a lot of more grants that we can apply. Just by completing a lot of cleanup projects, beautification projects. And we just keep the goal standing and we will have a lot of more opportunities. Also, we applied for the Governance Community Achievement Awards and we were awarded third place. We don't not get any money from this award, but we do get the recognition. And that's it for this slide.
General question, Adalina?
Yes.
How many water catchment sites does the city have in the parks?
Like the rain gardens?
No, I mean like buildings with water catchment gutters running into barrels where you can use that for watering, things like that.
We are proposing one at City Hall, but let me get your information and I can follow up with you. I can follow up with our department and see what do we have out there.
I'll send you an email tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're almost done with the planning and then we'll submit like the final planning report. And how are we gonna plant this to the city ma, city manager? And then we proceed soon on the green space. Okay, and lastly, we have our Household Hazardous Waste Pilot Collection Event. We got this through the Rio Grande Cog and it's gonna be this weekend. So I just thought to present it to council if they want to reach to the constituents and just have people call in. Before that Saturday, so we can have a great turnout this weekend. And I can email this flyer if anybody needs it. Any questions?
Adalina, since you took over the recycling. You have done a fantastic job, you and your team have done a fantastic job out there. So I just wanted to mention that, congratulate you and your team on the great job that you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor, I couldn't have done it without the support either with my supervisor and the city manager.
Adalina Rick Stevens, on the proposed catchment for water for Civic Center and City Hall. If I look at the green spaces, the intent for that water to be diverted to the trees to make sure they're watered. Is that really what that game plan is?
Yes, um, once we, once we plant the trees, we'll have an irrigation line. So they get established and the goal is to to use the catchment to continue. Once they're established, to keep water than, watering.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Adalina, great job.
Thank you, have a good evening, thank you everyone.
You too.
All right.
Good evening, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
So this is my quarterly report for January, February and March. This was our stray intakes, you can kind of see which wards we were picking up. And mainly we had 68 intakes, three of them are repeat offenders. 15 were cats and 53 were dogs that we picked up stray. Next slide. This is a comparison between 2019, 20 and 21. You can see that our straight intakes have decreased. As of this year, this is comparative of all the the last three years, first quarterly report. So that's, that's really good to see. We hope to see those numbers drop even more. Next slide please, this is our feral cat intake. We, majority of our feral cats were trapped in Ward 4. This is just people that are trapping specifically for feral cats. Next slide. Return to owner, I thought this was kind of an interesting thing to show y'all too, is that in 2021, you can see that a lot of our animals are being reclaimed as compared to the previous first quarters, so 2019, 2020, you can see that that the red line there is our returns. That, I mean, people are reclaiming their animals now, which is really, really important. It makes our job a lot easier, so.
Are down, are down.
Yeah, overall strays are down, there are 68 strays and 51 returns. So, I mean, that's, that's just awesome. Surrenders, we had one cat surrender and 10, 10 dog surrenders. We had three, three extra dog surrenders that were actually involved in bite incidents that we had to unfortunately euthanize. So this is other intakes, we don't just pick up strays. So this is, I just wanted to kind of show other, other types of intakes that we did bring in. Everybody was returned back to a relative or a family member or the owner. Arrests, deaths, quarantines are just holding them during a search warrant, so. Next slide please. Adoptions, you can see our adoption numbers are low, but our intake numbers are low and our return to owners are high. So this is actually not a bad thing. I mean, it is a decrease over the last three years, as you can see on the the chart there. But we, of course, we're gonna expect our, our adoptions to be low, so. Transports, 25 animals were transferred to other rescues. We actually did our first air transport from our airport here in Alpine. And that was a really neat thing, they took one dog and 11 cats. Or 14 cats, 11 of the cats were actually from the Marathon Shelter. So that was really neat to participate in, just taking them over there and putting them on the plane. And it was under an hour, they got to Austin and they seem to be doing really well and they, you know, they're, they're a really good organization as well. So I'm sure a lot of those cats and that dog actually was a heartworm dog, so it's probably still being treated. But a lot of those cats are probably already in their, in their new home, so that was really cool. Animal bites, animal bites seems to be, except for, for some reason, 2020 in February, we kind of had a had a spike there, but this year, or this year's quarterly report shows about the same trend. So 10 animal bites were reported. And then you see the little graph there that shows kind of where they were, where they occurred, so. We did place seven microchips for the public. You can always do a microchip for your pets at the shelter for $15, we register them when you bring them in. So highly encourage that for the public. It is in the ordinance that is required for all animals to be microchipped, so. Please contact me if you'd like to have that done. Citations issued, most of them are, it looks like half of them are the running at large citations. Then no microchip, no city licenses are basic ones that we, that we write. PSAs, I've been doing a PSA every month. Excuse my dog in the background. So this has actually been kind of fun, I get to, you know, pick a topic. And Chris Rugio has actually been helping me with the graphic portion and putting them together. You can find all of our PSAs on the front page of the city website. And then if you go to our section, actually on the city website, you can see the older ones. So just continue to put some good information out there so people, you know, can reference those anytime. Shade structures, so we actually got this, two of these shade structures built. They started in March and they are complete. They're really nice structures that U Construction made for us. They have three pens, each one of them does, and we actually use these for our intake dogs or if we have a litter of puppies that need outside time. And that cementing there that we, we put down at the bottom is actually gonna help us control with, you know, contagious disease and stuff like that. It makes it easier to clean than what we had before, which was dirt pens. So we're really excited to have that, those new structures, they look, they look awesome, so. This is our old shade structures that, well, they weren't shade structures, they were just, you know, fence fencing. That we'd like to actually donate to the Humane Society if you guys would approve of that. They can either use it at their, you know, thrift store, sell it at their thrift store. Or if they need it for, for any other reason, I just like to get it off the property. So with your blessing, I'd like to, to move along with that.
It will, I'll have that up in front of council. We'll get that done next meeting.
That's all I got for y'all.
Any questions for Jennifer?
Great job as usual.
Thank you.
Absolutely, Jennifer, great job.
Great, thank, thank you, Jennifer, and Mayor, that wraps, wraps it up for city manager and staff.
Okay, very good, that's on to the public hearings. And public hearings obtained citizens' views and comments on ordinance 2021 dash oh four dash oh six. And ordinance amending chapter 90, article four, coin operator establishments to the Alpine City Code of ordinances. Anybody?
Is there anybody here for, no, nobody, nobody in council chambers, Mayor?
Okay, move to public carries obtain citizens' views and comments on short term rental special use permit applications.
So I think for most of these, we're gonna go ahead and wait till that action item. I know I have a few people wanting to make a comment at that time.
Okay, Jill, thank you, sir.
Anybody here want to make a comment at this point? Okay, we do have at least one that wants to make a comment at this point.
Okay.
On, on the short term rental permits, yeah, so we do have a two, at least two, possibly three, okay.
Photos and my letter I presented last time for the city council. So those of you who've never been to your, at least will have a view of what was there. As inside, since the last meeting, we were approached Friday night by a policewoman who wanted to issue us trespass, a warning against trespass. The owner of being considered for the conditions permitted six oh two million cop law in response to a letter apparently that was in a manual that was taped to their front door. Called the police and requested that everybody whose name was on that letter, and I did not know about the letter, or my name being on the letter, but it was apparently. Received with no trespassing codes. At ten thirty on Friday night, we had a knock on the door. And we were issued this notice. And apparently, all the names of which five of these seven residences at two hundred feet were on that thing that were issued, or to be issued notices against trespass. Mrs. Moss, who's in her late nineties apparently, apparently was on that list, too. So. We were going to request that she turn down the permit we refused, for any resident of this zone rather than a single factor. One of the biggest major problems on it is that the alleyway between our house residence that has the permit, who lost the permit, is used as a common alleyway, it's common parking, it's common driving area. Which also has a gas meter on one side and wind stores on the other, and a car recloaking on the side of the alley. We have no relatives, customers, et cetera. On occasion, there were five, six loud cars that apparently they were using. Beating the Cobra Mustangs or something. They were quite loud. And on other occasions, trying to back a trailer up the alley, you'd have a car into something. And he finally gave up because of our car on the north side and the gas meter on his south side. He finally just gave up. Had it been smart, he would have driven around the block, come down the alley anyway. The gas meter's been running to the corner sometime in nineteen, or two thousand eight. Of course, the gas company here not too long ago had come out and looked at it because of the traffic on that alleyway. And they apparently had done nothing about it. It was hit and I was by itself, tried to consider. And she called the gas, called the police, they called the gas company, and they are taking care of us. It's disconcerting to have a mini motel across the alley. Only this past weekend, we bought six motorcycles along the side of the street. From what I've heard, apparently, there's nothing we can do about that, except I'm going to have to buy a new phone currently to be able to record noise. A photograph, because I have a flip phone. If you have any questions about the phones, no worries. Ask the information phone.
Mayor, next we have Rita Peel.
Rita.
Okay. And in the microphone, we'll pick you up a little bit better.
Okay, yes. The first one we have is, this was before all the people were there for a gathering. There ended up being eight motorcycles in this little parking area. And I think it must have been other folks could tell us. It must have been a couples field, because there were two on each motorcycle. Here is just showing, oh, and there was a another time they had, I believe it was seven bikers, and they had to pick up the utility trailer. And that also came along with them. And this third one is, I outlined the gas meter. It's in a very precarious area. And whatever happens, we really need to get this taken care of. Because we had, some years ago, a group of high school students ran into this and then went off and left it spewing gas. I found out about it because it was summertime and I had my windows up. And I went out, found it, called authorities. But it is out, there's a retaining wall. A retaining wall. But this is on the alley side of that group retaining. And we watched a man whose travel trailer tried to back in it. And he had to pay up. It's difficult. Now, I will make a point and say that we might mention that our car was on the side. That was on our property. But if you could give us some help getting this changed from the gas company, I would appreciate it very much. I don't want to go through a broken gas pipe. Let's see. These are the lights. Go on to various times of night. Whenever guests decide to go to sleep, the noise and the lights quieten down. We have here, the next page. This shows this area here on the side. That shows the side of our storage building. And right beside that, there was a pile filled. A large gathering, I won't call it a pile, of cigarettes. And then they were scattered out throughout this area. Evidently, since they're not supposed to smoke in the rooms, they've been walking out here. And this would protect them from a northern wind. And so I'm thinking they're smoking outside behind our little storage room. And it's wood. It would burn. And it's about four inches off the ground, which would give a good path for any ashes or anything, any butts that were still lit. And so I would like to either request that they not allow them to do that, or maybe put up some sort of retaining wall. And also, we've had, it's really the spacing, there's quite a bit of ringed park, but we have the parks, cars. And one tries to turn in, they can't make it. So they've been backing up actual overall our boundary line on our land, right within a few feet, a couple of feet of the, of that shed that I was talking about. Might need to put something there to kind of say, you know, we would prefer you don't back over this entire our shed. Anyway, that was all I wanted to say, except you know, if anyone keeps talking about this like this is your ordinary rental. But these rentals are keyed towards loud motorcycles, loud performance cars, I think they're called. Shelby cars. And we've had some of those. They're even louder than the, or appear to be louder than the motorcycles. So, you know, this is, when they come in at two thirty in the morning, you don't want to hear, you don't want to be awakened by a bunch of motorcycles or performance cars. And I think that is a very important distinction. Also, this has already, I know it's good for the owners who want to do this. Have the, they call it the laws. But it values every home that is around it because it is noisy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Right. Yeah, we do have Monica Carroga.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having us here. My name is Monica Carroga. We own one residential that we live in and work by. We own one residential in Ward Four and one commercial Ward Four, so where everybody's concerned. I'm happy answering questions about the laws.
We can't share. We can't talk.
Okay.
So if you want us to respond, my recommendation is do it as part of the action item, but we cannot respond during public.
Okay, that's okay. I'll just read what I have then. I logged on to AirDNA today. AirDNA says we have one hundred and ninety-two short-term rentals in the city of Alpine. The majority of those rentals are in residential areas. And I actually have a map of that, but I print it out in case you guys are unaware of the number of STRs that are in residential areas. Our lighting is one hundred percent dark skies compliant. Every lighting fixture that we have is covered, or it's underneath a balcony. And the lighting that is on the exterior courtyard is actually super low wattage, what we call flickering bulbs. So they mimic like the flame, but they're dimmer than any other light source that is on that block. We've been hosting in compliance with the state of Alpine's regulations for about two years. We carry, I think, two million dollars in general liability. And we do have a right up for short-term rentals. We've been paying the city's hot tax, and we're among the first owners of a residential structure to go through this process with the guys last month. Maintenance, housekeeping, and our yard guys are on-site daily. So if there's any trash that is either in the alley, or it's behind the house, or it's in my courtyard, or anywhere else, they're picking that up every single day. After last month's meeting with Carl Fleming, who accused our guest of throwing cigarettes by the dumpster, Judy Freeman, who accused guests of throwing beer over the fence and into the street, I went straight home and took photos of both the dumpster on the street side of our home and the street where Miss Living lives. There were zero cigarette butts and not a single piece of trash around the dumpsters within ten minutes of leaving this building. I sent those photos immediately over to Councilman Stevens. In order for guests to do any of the things that Carl allegedly claimed, guests have to actually get out from the courtyard, bypass two trash cans, and go out of their way to either go across the alley to the dumpster, or they have to finish a can of beer, throw it thirty feet across the courtyard, up above the ten-foot fence and eight foot into the street, which is impossible to do with a beer can. And if they were to do that with a glass bottle, the bottle would shatter in the street. None of my neighbors have one time spoken to us about any complaints from any of our overnight guests. City manager Eric Zimmer has lived about a block away from us since before we moved into the home three years ago. And assuredly, he hasn't had an issue with any of the residents to our house. Yesterday, city secretary Cynthia Solis came by my house with Councilwoman Rodriguez, who took them through a walk-through of the property. Councilwoman Rodriguez told me that she's driven by the house, including up the alley several times since the last meeting, including at night, and has not seen anything that has given her pause. There have been zero police calls on our guests, except for one time, that Judy Freeman called the police department and gave a false statement. Guests were playing music in the courtyard. Police showed up. Danny was in the courtyard with our guests, who happened to all be police officers. And as I stated last meeting, the African-American police officer and his wife had been walking the neighborhood in that afternoon. And I believe that that was the impetus for Judy Freeman to call the police. We recently had to call PD for a criminal trespass issue. The dogs were outside the entirety of the time that the police officer was talking to Judy Freeman across the street. Not one time did our dogs bark. Our dogs are one hundred percent inside dogs. They go outside to use a potty three or four times a day. And when Councilwoman Rodriguez was at the house yesterday, they were outside. They didn't bark. So this allegation that there is some constant barking of some invisible outside dogs, I'm not quite sure where she gets that from. Anytime that we allow dogs at the property, we tell the guests specifically, these are your mitigation efforts. Or these are mitigation efforts that we will take if your dog barks. We only allow small dogs on the property, and we only allow them one at one time. And most notably, planning and zoning commissioner Dennis Foley, his wife Roslyn, Judy Freeman, former planning and zoning commissioner Carl Fleming, and his wife have taken it upon themselves to trespass on our private property in order to arrest and intimidate my family. I'd like to enter a recitation of police report into the official record for this meeting. We arrived at town this week. We arrived home from the out of town on four thirty twenty twenty-one, around nine fifteen P M. There was a note that contained a list of demands from our neighbors and a reference to our short-term rental, not taped to the door. But somebody had to open the door and shove that letter in between my front door and the jam of my door. The letter was signed by Roslyn Stanford, planning and zoning commissioner Dennis Foley, Judy Freeman, Nick Simmington, Cindy Simmington, Rita Peel, Carmel, Mike Fleming, and Julia Nell Moss. I called APD in nine thirty-eight to report the trespass on our property and establish a record as Carl has continually harassed us and entered our private property to skip around for the last three years, as evidenced by the handful of pictures that he's been taking of our property. When APD arrived, they asked, when you could deliver the letter? I told Officer Ligoretta that I needed to pull security camera footage, but that I wanted everyone who signed the letter to know they're not welcome on our property. We have had a no trespass sign on our property for the last three years. Then entering our property was removed. While Officer Ligoretta was outside, I attempted to pull the camera footage at our front carport, but the camera was offline. Well, the last image timestamped that morning at eight thirty-four A M, when my daughter left to go out of town. I went outside to see what was wrong with the cameras and saw that the wire had been pulled apart at the junction. This is not the first time we've had wires cut. Just last week, we repaired the lines to our courtyard lines, which were cut directly across the street from Judy Freeman's driveway. In order to rate detection, the camera wire had to be accessed from the direction of Carl Fleming's house. Carl Fleming is also the reason that we burn our house. He is the reason that we have locks from all of our doors because Carl has been caught in our storage trailer, snooping around. It's been, y'all think you have issues with Carl here at the council, you should try living next door to Carl. It is insane. Mr. Fleming has been told more than once to stay off of our property due to his continued harassment. Although our carport cameras were tampered with, one of our employees caught in a stolen, in Roslyn Stanford on his dash cam on the way to come trespass on our property. Again, we have employees coming by several times a week to clean up. Ms. Stanford had the aforementioned letter in her hand. When Officer Ligoretta came by to return my license, I shared that footage with her. I messaged the city manager Eric Zimmer the other morning, as well as Councilman Stevens. As Mr. Foley is Councilman Stevens appointed to city's planning and zoning commission. Councilman Stevens had previously offered to facilitate a conversation between us and the neighbors. Instead, our neighbors took it upon themselves to further their mom mortality and take the dangerous step to trespass on our property. My daughter and my grandchildren live with us. I have a four-year-old grandson who has cerebral palsy. In the event that some mom shows up at my door, they do not have the means to exit the property safely. At this point, I'm concerned with the safety of my family, especially given that Fleming, Peel, and Freeman were accused to sign their criminal trespass notice, making me think that they're not trespassing on our property yet again. I've now had the cameras disconnected, live electrical lines cut, my cat was stolen and dove seven miles south of town. And my Maltese disappeared within seven minutes of escaping my front door about a year ago. At some point, these events are no longer coincidental. We've operated our STRs in compliance with the city for about two years now without incident. We've complied with the new regulations. We've complied with the new regulations, we passed all of our inspections, and we submitted hot taxes in exchange for the continued ability to have STRs at our home. I respectfully request close patrol until this harassment and violation of our property, private property rights, yes, the votes. On Saturday, I received a text from Ms. Moss's granddaughter, who is her caregiver, who says that she is a hundred years old, she's immobile, and we know that she has a medical condition that precluded her from understanding what it does that she signed. If they have to exploit an elderly, put her name on a letter that she didn't even get a chance to read. That shows who the problem, the problem is not from our house, the problem is from my neighbors, thank you.
Any other comments?
Kiss.
All right.
Okay, Mayor.
Okay, no more comments. Let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Minutes, financial reports, department.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry, Judy, I'm sorry.
Don't we get three minutes each?
Yes, you do, I apologized, okay?
That, that was the longest three minutes I've ever heard.
Well, you were too quick.
Okay, but I think there are several of us that want to speak on this issue and I don't know why. They may not understand. Am I, am I speaking at the right time, Rick?
Yes, if you're making a comment, yes, ma'am.
I'm just addressing the R one coding issue, is that what this, is that where we are?
We're with the short-term rentals right now.
Right, right, okay, well, I want to speak, please. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Ramos and City Council for letting me speak. My name is Judy Freeman and I'm the one she refers to that lives across the street at six, from six oh two North Cockrell on East Avenue A. Mr. Gins and Ms. Coruga's courtyard face is my front yard. Danny Quinn and Monica Coriga, Quiroga, excuse me, the owners of six oh two North Cockrell knowingly and willingly purchased a home zoned R one. R one is defined as a detached residential dwelling unit, other than a mobile home designed for and occupied by one family only. Okay, six oh two North Cockrell was built as and has always been a single-family home in a quiet R one neighborhood, surrounded by quiet and friendly neighbors. We're all proud, long-term homeowners, some of us have lived there for more than fifty years and we have made significant investments in the purchase and improvement of our properties. Unfortunately, the newest owners of six oh two North Cockrell have set about to break the city's zoning laws by converting forty-four of their bedrooms into hotel-like rental units for up to sixteen people through Airbnb and other sites. They never asked permission, as far as I know, from the city to operate their, a small hotel at their home and they just simply disregarded the R one zoning law and did as they pleased. So consequently, we had this influx of strangers coming and going, resulting in vehicle noise, late-night party noise on the patio and the courtyard and the balconies, barking dogs, light pollution, and excessive trash. And it has created issues that did not exist before in our peaceful neighborhood. The courtyard is not private and secluded as our, as they advertise. The fence, the privacy fence across the street from my yard is, in some places, only four feet tall and people in the courtyard are visible from my yard and their voices and music carry into my home. My windows are open most of the year because I use a swamp cooler and I have been subjected to barking dogs left unattended in the courtyard at all hours of the day and night, noise created by late-night guests and other issues. I'm now inclined to lock my doors at night and even consider a security system. But most importantly, I believe the long-term consequences of allowing this unotherwise business to continue is decreasing the value of my home. So finally, my peace, my security and my home investment, and most of all, the enforcement of existing zoning laws are the reasons why this permit should be denied without compromise. And may I put a footnote in there as to her other accusations, I won't even honor them. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
So we, we did have two more people that wanted to make a comment at the action item. I'm not sure if they want to go ahead and make it now, it's Matthew Rogo and Cindy Simmington.
Okay.
If you want to talk now, you can go ahead.
And Mayor, let's make a quick announcement that these are supposed to be limited to three minutes.
Mine was, I think.
Is, okay. Ms. Simmington.
Okay, hi, my name is Cindy Simmington and I would like to comment about the, the short-term rental application next door. First of all, I have prepared comments so that I wouldn't leave anything out, but I do feel the need to add a little bit after what's just, what's just been said. Jim Hightower likes to say that property rights are great as long as they're yours. Never has anything been more true and that's why we have zoning laws inside cities to protect people's property rights. My husband and I are both dismayed and bewildered that the city of Alpine would even consider allowing a hotel to open up in an R one neighborhood. And please make no mistake, this is a hotel that has been operating next door to me for the past couple of years with a sixteen-person occupancy and four additional family members living on site that exceeds the occupancy limit of the Loma on Highway ninety, which is zoned appropriately. We purchased our house in twenty fifteen intending to retire to a quiet neighborhood and zoning was important to us. Like any responsible buyer, we made sure that we sought to purchase a home in the type of neighborhood that we want to live in. And I want to note that the applicant already owns a seventeen-room hotel in the commercial part of town and I do want to acknowledge their contribution to the city's tax base. It's a great addition to Alpine and people love it. They do not need a second hotel that openly violates the rights of others in a residential neighborhood. The noise and the lights coming from the courtyard are so bright. I don't know what she's talking about. Meeting requirements because it's just not true. The lights coming from the courtyard are so bright that we've not been able to open our windows or our blackout curtains since they moved in next door to us at night. We do not have central air and being able to open our windows is vitally important on warm nights. But it is precisely when the weather's nice that we are kept awake by unruly guests. And I hope the city council has had a chance to read a letter I sent in which I copied a user review for this property, which I got directly after Airbnb listing. And contrary to what the applicant told Mr. Stevens' last meeting about controlling unruly guests, when he did ask her directly what she did to control the noise, this reviewer states, "We had, quote, 'we had quite a few excited teenagers who could be loud at times, laughing and joking around, but the host let us enjoy our stay with no restrictions,' unquote." And I assure you, that is not an isolated event. In addition to noisy teenagers, the courtyard floodlights point, or one floodlight points directly at our bedroom. And contrary to what the applicant has stated, the courtyard is not private. Visitors in the courtyard can and do look directly up at our upstairs bedroom and occasionally they even point or wave. That is very humiliating when you're getting ready to go to bed. Um, I had a couple of other things I had written down, but I do want to take my last couple of thirty seconds or so to just say that the accusations lob against us for putting a letter in her door, Mr. Stevens requested that we try to come up with a compromise and that is exactly what we did. We not, the Rosalind Stanford knocked or, sorry, rang the doorbell, nobody was there, so she stuck the letter in the door. And then we were all charged with trespassing. I think this shows that the applicant is not willing to compromise. We had proposed a compromise which we are now going to withdraw because we do not appreciate being accused of criminal mischief. We are all old, we're all retired, we are not capable of criminal mischief. And I can tell you, we all would like to get a good night's sleep at our age. And I'm done, thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. And we have one other.
He's actually not on right now, so he might pop back later, I'll let you know.
Okay, then we're ready to move on. Okay, we got the consent agenda then. The minutes, financial reports, department written reports and board appointments, et cetera. Notice to the public, the following items are of a routine administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background support material on each item and/or has been discussed at a all items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member. In which event, the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in a normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote, city manager.
We have one item on the consent agenda, it's for the approval of the minutes from the previous city council meeting.
Then we approve the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a second, any discussion? See none, then let's go ahead and vote on it, all in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose? Motion carries, thank you all very much. And now we'll move on to the information or discussion items. And Councilman Stevens?
So Mayor, I have two items on the information discussion. The first one I'd like to talk about is the Brewster County Appraisal District. I represent the city on that board of seven people and I feel propocation for y'all to speak about what's going on. I will continue to represent you all, you know, through the year because it's tied to an annual election that the I currently serve as the chair and there's three important things I think that are worthwhile mentioning. One, for the first time in a long time, we have all seven members in place. San Jacinto School District finally got a board member, so we're now pulling up, running, it's nice to see. Second thing I think is important is for the first time since I've been associated with the district, we passed something called MAPS. It's done by the attorney general's office to look at, are we compliant with all the state regulations? We've never passed it before. And so one of the things that I pushed for when we become the chair is that we make sure we are fully compliant with all the requirements, which is all of our audits, all of our dues, all of our processes. And I'm pleased to say for twenty twenty, we actually passed the MAPS audit, so it was a big deal. And I compliment Denise Forrest, who is the county appraiser. Her leadership has come a long ways and I also want to thank all my peer board members for helping make sure that it goes along with that at every one of our meetings. And we meet the third Tuesday at eleven o'clock each month. Third thing I would like to talk about, it came up in our last meeting, which is probably not good news to all of us and that is property values continue to increase at a rate that none of us are happy with. And you'll see a letter come out from Denise, we're in the process of drafting it now, that will just talk about what's going on with property values. Because of the number of people who are buying property from Alpine or coming out of Alpine to buy property, property values are going up and so are property taxes also going up as a result of that. My views like the news, it's happening across the country. It's amazing, the number of the property values that are going up at such a significant rate, Eric talked to it. People are wanting to get away from the high-traffic cities and they're finding properties, whether it's at Marfa, Fort Davis, Alpine, Marathon, all those properties going up and people are getting at least what they're asking for. And in some cases, there are bidding wars going on for property. It all is reflected when the appraisers do their evaluations. And we'll tell you that Alpine Independent School District is not unhappy with all that because for the first time, the property evaluations are actually within the range between a minimum of ninety-five percent and a hundred and five percent of what the state assesses. So that's good news from an Alpine school district standpoint, but it certainly hits all of us in our pocketbooks. So that's my report, are there any questions?
I've got one, I want to thank you for the report and explain my property taxes, even though we don't like them, but at least you gave us an explanation as to.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor.
Anybody else? Okay, sir, then let's go ahead and move to the second, Councilman Stevens.
So the second item, I asked you to put on the agenda because we have all, lots of, certainly lots of discussion. I know most of the audience is here and I know Eric's going to pull the charts up on the screen for those who are not able to see them. I own talent stuff lined up here as Eric pulls the charts up. But I really wanted to walk through a short-term rental, I want to thank our signatory Sandy for walking through, in my mind, one of the key questions that's been bugging me since the last city council meeting and that's precedent with regard to zoning. And what I heard, Sandy, you walked through, zoning pertains to the building construction that it's built to a single-family or duplex, which is R one is single-family, R two is two-family, R three is multifamily or apartments, R four is trailers. And making distinction between that and use, which are two different things, and I think that's an important element. And whether we like it or not, it sounds like the state Supreme Court has taken their action on that to tough the city council to argue with that. So I'm going to walk through these charts and then do some amendments as we walk through because you also, Sandy, gave us some perspectives about what I believe the city council needs to be doing and we have some work to do relative to our ordinance. So, you know, first is some background because I think it's important for all of us. The short-term rentals were established in two thousand and sixteen under the conditional use permits. And the big issue where we're doing the time is compliance to hot funding tax payments. The city was not getting short-term rentals to pay for the hot funding, so that got codified in the ordinance in two thousand and sixteen. It was reviewed by Planning and Zoning as part of the process and it came forward. In two thousand and seventeen, a city council increased the annual, or actually established an annual fee of three hundred and fifty dollars per year to be able to cover the cost for the city to do its work associated with, with the work it needed to do compliance. The ordinance was updated again at the beginning of this year for a number of reasons. One, there was lack of compliance to follow the ordinance. And council thought it's worthwhile to get, you know, let's look at that again and put some teeth into it. And section one twenty was added to chapter eleven to the Alpine municipal code, which is in fact the planning and zoning requirements. It also updated fees, made requirements for fire inspections, made requirements for permits and required the approval of conditional use permits. So my view, the good news is we're now at the discussion about the conditional use permits and we've all learned a lot and as I said, in my view, there's been excellent follow-up across the city to new, to new requirements because now we're having a dialogue on the subject and, you know, my view is that's where we need to be. We'll go on the next slide, there seem to be three concerns that at least came out of the last meeting. One of the concerns over noise and we continue to hear that as, as a big concern. And that's why I asked the question at the last meeting, you know, what controls are in place for short-term rental operators? And particularly whether it's, well, we have vehicle noise ordinance. As Eric pointed out in the city's manager's report, we have work to do on updating our noise ordinance because while one can work it through pulling together all the different ordinances of the city, frankly, I think it's difficult for us to sort out what all those are and my recommendation, you'll see on the next slide, is we need to get an integrated noise ordinance that we all understand and figure out how to move forward with, whether it's cars, whether it's, you know, music, whether it's dogs, whether it's whatever, get all that in an integrated way. And we have a way to measure that noise that the chief of police can effectively look and say, "I got this recording, I got this measurement, it does or it does not violate." Because the noise that may be loud to one may be not loud to another. And, you know, you know, cars is, is an item, you know, cars, it was pointed out, you know, the mufflers are the mufflers and, you know, but some of them are doggone, you know, pretty loud. And when they're out running on the road, not a big issue, when they're running the city, that's a different issue. The second item was short-term rentals in R. The second item was short-term rentals on R1 property. I think Sandy addressed that. That the distinction about R1 versus short-term rentals and use, those are two separate issues. In fact, for a part of the reason Sandy, you trust that is because I sent her a note, was it yesterday? It says Sandy, help us.
That was there, so.
Yeah, because, because there's a challenge there. The other thing I will tell you is we have multiple rentals on R1 property, independent of short-term rentals. This city has many long-term rentals on R1 property. Part of it goes back to when the university was built, that some people built student apartments. In theory, that violated the R1 zoning at the time because it shouldn't have been built for another property or for another use, because that would say it had to be an R2. Nonetheless, we have them. We've got to figure out what our approach is going for that. So whether it's short-term rentals or R1 or long-term rentals, we have that issue. So no discussion. Now if we go on the next slide. In my view, you know, concerns over noise can easily be addressed by owners, and it's great to see owners being able to work that. I think as Eric pointed out from doggy, barking dogs in his own time era in Alpine, it really is incumbent upon us if we hear that regularly, record the, record the issues on the phones. There's been a number of cases that have occurred in War V where that has occurred. The resident has, you know, recorded the animal and turned that in, and the police have been able to take appropriate action. So again, it's a common way of getting understanding of what happened, how we worked that. But also believe that the city does in fact need to update its noise ordinance requirements. And I think Eric's already addressed that, and I think we'll push for planning and zoning to go work that and then bring that back to council for appropriate discussion and review. In my opinion, this is such a, I'm, I'm, I get myself in trouble, but I'll use the word potentially contentious element. And I think we really need a city workshop to go work it. So we get all the constituents to be able to come in to say what's reasonable, what's fair to go work that. And that's been my approach to life. When you got tough issues, you bring people together, talk about it, come up with what makes sense, common measures, common numbers, and what have other cities done to go do that? So I think that one is an action to go work, and I, I believe planning and zoning ought to go work that and come back to council or, and listen to that and have the zoning activities or have the discussion and the public hearing. I have a number two, multiple short-term rentals on R1 property. And I put some definitions there relative to what goes on, because I personally believe that an R1 is an R1 and ought to be a single-family dwelling. But I'm not on the Supreme Court. I don't get to make that decision. So the Supreme Court, they've made that decision. We can certainly do it from a planning and zoning standpoint, but from a short-term rental standpoint, that's the property owner's decision. And so, as was pointed out, you know, there's lots of units where that occurs, whether it's on R1, R2, R3, R4, C1 and C2. I do believe ultimately the Supreme Court is gonna have to address the issue because it really aggregates any zoning laws that are put in place. And I believe that'll be the next suit that eventually works its way to Supreme Court. They're gonna have to adjudicate that with the balance between property owner and the zoning that cities want to do to work that because I think that's the, that's the key element. As I said, we are gonna have to work the longer-term R1 properties with long-term rentals and separate buildings. We are doing an inventory. They do not comply with the zoning requirements. And we're gonna have to figure out an approach to go work that. So, you know, thoughts moving forward, which is the next slide. Number one, we gotta go work the noise ordinance. And my view is a city council working with city manager, I say, planning, zoning, go work it, set a deadline and come back with an answer. Since this is my last meeting, I'm, well, I could say all I want. You're right, that I come off city council, so we have to move, you know, to the two returning members here and the new members of council coming on board because there will be three new council members coming on board. It gets sworn in next Monday, as I recall. I, I believe that the, my vote was gonna be on the current SDR applications, you know, recommend approval if they comply with zoning, but since that's no longer an issue, it really has to do with making sure there's a commitment to comply with the requirements. And I do think it's an important element to consider that the city does in fact look at a noise, which we've talked about. I think light trespass is important. I think trash bins are important, I think. And as one who pushed back against insurance, if I were to continue on city council, I'd say city council ought to establish insurance requirements. I personally believe that a business owner has the responsibility to manage insurance on their own. I'm a business owner. I've got a number of businesses and I make sure I work my insurance requirements. But I think the city is gonna need to put that on because the potential liability the city could face in our litigious world today. And in my own businesses, I have multi-million dollars' worth of insurance, and I just do that because I think that's a smart thing to do as a business person. I do think that also city council is gonna need to establish a set of criteria relative to the number of violations that get reported and are substantiated by the police department. Because I think that's gonna be important to get agreement because without teeth, it's really difficult to go back and forth. So I think council is gonna need to work towards that. So in terms of the near-term actions, I'm kind of throwing those out the window and giving you my verbal perspective. And, and my recommendation again would be that council ask planning and zoning to go work that as the facilitators for that discussion. I think, again, it should be a city workshop to go work it and, and come back with recommendations in each of those areas. Trash, lighting, noise, insurance, hot funding, potentially inspections. Oh, and the last one's parking. Because I would tell you before, my sense is parking not an issue, but I do think the city needs to be more stringent about parking in residential areas because in many cases, you know, if you flood the streets, it impacts the residents, and I don't think that's fair to the residents. So that would be an item that shouldn't go off the work, and I've got those seven items that I'll be happy to share. So those are my thoughts. I would turn to my fellow council members. Does that make sense? That's a reasonable? Yeah, yeah, there's certainly a lot of work to do. And as I said, I think you've got planning and zoning to, as the opportunity to work that, and I'm happy to. Eric, you have any additional comments or thoughts?
I would say that the workshop format is absolutely vital. I think it's important that, and it's not just a one-and-done thing, that there's two or three to allow people to mature their, their comments and their thoughts and bring in other, you know, other members of the community. I think the other piece, just from my perspective, is, is taking our Planning and Zoning Commission and really rebuilding that. I took a look back at the last two years of agendas with planning and zoning, and not once was there ever any addressing on an ordinance. It was simply just looking at conditional use permits or zone changes that came through and thumb up or thumb down. And the reality of it is it's such an important commission. I mean, it is the most important commission supporting council. And we need to make sure we've got seven members that are wanting to do the work, participate in the workshops, and be thoughtful in, in that approach. So that, that will make things smoother. And I think there's, there's that level of community advocacy that comes through that. So, you know, my suggestion is, I mean, between our Planning and Zoning Commission and our council, you know, it would be good to have 100% attendance at all of these workshops. And we'll, we'll want to structure them so that maybe they're prior to a council meeting, spend a couple hours. That seems to have been most effective when we do it that way.
Okay, well, that's, those are my thoughts and comments, and as I said, happy to help in that process. And I already got a discussion with the individual placement, Jerry Johnson, to start that discussion, carry it out. Bring him up to speed so he walks in with a fresh perspective, at least from a work-life standpoint. Hold that.
Right, there. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, let's move on to the action items to be accompanied by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from. If applicable, action items are limited to 10 per meeting. After being called upon by the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, citizens are required to state their name and the warding where they reside. Priority will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own property or business or property in the city limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak if there's time available. City Manager Zimmer?
Mayor and city council, first item we have is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the acceptance of the audit readout from Gibson, Ruddick, Patterson, LLC. Well, wanted motion in a second, and then we can open the discussion. We've got Craig and Marlene here.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we approve the audit readout from Gibson, Ruddick, and Patterson fellows.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, we have Craig, Craig here this evening. And Craig, I don't know if you or Marlene want to lead us through the discussion. I do have the, the slides ready to go or the, the charts ready to go when you're ready.
All right, I'll get us started. If you could bring up the graphs, we could go to the first page to look at the, the revenue.
All right, let me, let me share the screen real quick. All right, can you see that, Craig?
Yes, sir. Okay, so what this is, is a five-year comparison of the governmental revenues. So it doesn't include our proprietary funds like the water and gas utilities. So the first section here, the blue section is the property tax revenue. And you can see we had a little bit of an increase here. I believe there was a slight increase in the rate, and there was also a little increase in the total assessed values. The gold section there is the sales and other taxes and little bit of a decrease here, and this is in keeping with other communities. The sales tax has just decreased because of the pandemic. The gray section is what we refer to as intergovernmental, and you can see we had a nice increase there. This is primarily related to a couple of grant. First, we had about a $95,000 increase in our HIDA money, but the big chunk came from the Corona Relief Fund, which was almost $300,000. And then the green is the admin and franchise, and that's what we're charging the proprietary funds to process all of their administrative issues. But the red section there on the top, the other revenue, that also is showing a little bit of an increase. And that relates primarily to what the enterprise funds paid to the governmental funds for some road repairs. Can we go to the next page, please? This is a comparison of just the general fund expenditures, okay? So the blue section on the bottom is the general government. And you can see we have a little bit of a decrease there. About 58,000 of salaries were reallocated, I guess, to the fund that is accounting for the Corona Relief funding. And then the remainder of that decrease is just a decrease in expenditures for the year. The gold section, the public works, we have a significant increase there, and that relates basically to about $900,000 of paving projects. The red section, health and welfare, basically the same. Culture and recreation, a decrease there, and again, that's gonna be COVID-related. The green section at the top, public safety, we see a decrease there. And similar to the general, we had about 130,000 of salaries that got reallocated over to the Corona Relief Fund. We had almost 50,000 more decrease in salaries. And then the other amount is just kind of across the board of actual spending decreases. This next page, please, is a comparison of the equity in the general fund. So the blue is our unassigned equity, and it's, it went up a little bit from the prior year, not a huge increase, but significant increase in the other. And what this relates primarily to is there was a $500,000 transfer from the gas fund that is committed to infrastructure improvements. And so that's why you see it here in the other section. The next page is a comparison of the revenue and expenses in the Water Sewer and Sanitation Fund. And you can see the blue is our revenue. And we do have an increase here. About 88,000 relates to an increase in the sanitation rate and the, which is about half the increase, and the other half relates to consumption increase that ended up providing the revenue. Now, the increase in expenses, about 150,000 or so relates to an increase in water-related salaries and services. And then about 40,000 relates to an increase in sanitation service expenses. The next page is the Gas Utility Fund. And not a lot of change here. We do see revenue going down. The rate actually went down about 2%, and consumption was down by about 4%. So that's why we have the decrease in revenue. Expenses were pretty close. If you look at the five years there, you can see we're right in the middle of where we've been. So that's the financial packet in a nutshell. The other item that we always provide to city council is our management letter. And that's where we provide recommendations for improvements, either to controls or to processes. Now, in here, we have current year comments and prior year comments. The prior year, those of you that have better memories than mine is getting to be, will recall that we had some serious issues with the management during that prior year that resulted in quite a few management comments. Now, going into this year, we, even though we've corrected the management problem, we had the pandemic. we had the pandemic that made it really difficult to correct a number of issues, just for the fact that we're operating with skeleton crew during the year. So about two-thirds of those prior year comments have been repeated in this year, and then there's a few new ones as well. I think the description of the issues are pretty straightforward. There are recommendations, I think, are understandable. And then management has included their response in there as well. So I don't, I don't think it's necessary for us to go over these here in the meeting because I do believe it's pretty easy to understand. Now, financially, the city did fine. This was a tough time, as everybody knows, and it really stressed a number of governments. However, it's good to see that the general fund, without considering that transfer from the gas, excuse me, that gas fund that has been committed for infrastructure. We still, it came out ahead by about 85,000. So I was really glad to see that not all governments have been so lucky. So I, I would do want to give credit to our current management for keeping a handle on things. And of course, City Council, you know, it, as it's been said before, the tone comes from the top. And I think you all have done a good job. So that's really all that we need to say unless there's any questions. I'll have to turn it over to Marlene. She's brains of the operation here.
Any questions?
So this is Rick. I've got a couple of questions. And whether it's Craig or Marlene, one of the things I always worry about is the pension liability. If you go to page 71, note 10, it talks about our liability minus our net asset pension position is actually improved by half a million dollars, which is great news. Should we, are we putting too much into our pension assets? And at what point, if not, at what point does that happen? Because we put an extra half a million dollars in there that the city certainly could use for value for the city.
Yeah. You actually have what's referred to as a net pension asset. Because what happened was, as you've contributed, the, these funds are invested. And your investments have done very well, and so it's turned around. Now, whether or not you can put less in, I believe is going to be a legal matter because your plan probably requires you to put a certain percent of salary in there. So I don't have the answer as to whether you could cut back or not. That's going to be based on your plan document.
Rick, this is Megan. I can actually answer that for you if you want.
Please.
So the council actually set the 5% percentage for the employees. That can only be changed by council. The percentage that the city contributes actually fluctuates based on what we have already invested. So some years it will go up slightly, and some years it will go down slightly. It also depends on the number of employees we have who are eligible for retirement to ensure that we can fully cover them. But we are one of several cities who's actually basically fully funded our retirement. I do know TMRS came back a few years ago, kind of shook up some of the other cities with, hey, you haven't been putting enough in, and we're increasing your rate significantly. The city's rate has never significantly increased.
Yeah, so I, so I think, Megan, when it comes to budget time, that's something you want to have a discussion with council. Because, you know, we used to have a net asset of 1.2 million, now we're up to a net asset of 1.7 million. So, and certainly council can set what that percentage is. I don't know what the answer is one way or the other, but I think if you run out some of the actuarials, it would be beneficial to council as they set that percentage. You may, council may look and say, you can say around 5%, you may want to say it's four and a half percent. As you, and then you're able to take advantage of that asset without having to put actual real dollars in as you start burning down some of that net asset. So, you know, we look at a city budget, this year we're at 14, a little over 14 million dollars. I suspect next year it's going to go up, but having a net asset of 1.7 million dollars, that's, that's 15% of your total budget. And there may be some things that make sense from a strategic standpoint to think about to go look at. And council certainly has. So, so the other question I would ask Dennis, as you think about, and I know Megan lives for the word called clean audit. Does this meet that criteria or not? And I'm not trying to sway one way, I'm just trying to get some sense about, particularly given what's gone with COVID. Certainly, not all the stuff got taken care of that we had hoped to, but what's your assessment?
Yes, Mr. Stevens, this is what you would refer to as a clean audit. It is a unmodified opinion. The audit opinion letter is on page two through four. And yes, it is a clean opinion.
Yeah, well, thank you. I had to ask. I think it's really important because when you look at, in my view, the score for our finance director, that is certainly one big element that goes into it. And I just wanted to make sure that got on the table and was public, and well done, Megan and Finance Team.
Thank you, Rick, and there were no findings.
Good job, Megan.
Yeah, well done, Mayor. I have no more questions.
Okay. Anything else? Any more questions for Mr. Gibson? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gibson. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, then let's go ahead and call for the votes. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Let's go on to item number two, City Manager.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Item number two is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the second and final reading of Ordinance 2021-04-06 in ordinance amending Chapter 90, Article 4, coin-operated establishments to the Alpine Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we approve the second and final reading of Ordinance 2021-04-06, ordinance amending Article 90, or Chapter 90, Article 4, coin-operated establishments for the ordinance.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion's been made and second discussion. Any discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose like sign. Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to item number three, City Manager.
All right, Mayor. Item number three is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the recommendation from planning and zoning concerning a conditional use permit application for the establishment of an ice manufacturing plant. The property is located at 106 South Harrison Street. Record owner is Manuel Salsito.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, to get the ball rolling, I propose we approve the recommendation of planning and zoning concerning a conditional use permit application establishment of the ice manufacturing plant at 106 South Harrison, which happened to be 45.
Is there a second? Okay, motion made and second discussion.
Yes, now I do have some. So this was a big, big topic at the Planning and Zoning Commission that I happened to attend, not as a City Council member, but as a resident of that ward. You know, that has been an ice plant before. It fell into disrepair. It was stopped being used, an ice plant, and they want to get it reestablished. I get the need and the desire on the part of the business to become, to come back up and provide us, you know, a little competitive marketplace to sell ice, and that's what they want to do. However, in my opinion, that area, and I use these terms, you know, once again, I tend to get myself in trouble. That place needs to be cleaned up dramatically. It has got some real issues, and I think one of the conditions that require approval, and I don't know if I need to amend the motion or not, is that entire property needs to be cleaned up and brought into code because it is an ISO. I just.
And I think that should be.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, and I think that council's brought up several times, and there's a lot of cleaning up to take place back in there before it goes, before we allowed it to get a permit.
Let me switch a little gear on this to, just to contemplate. This, this kind of goes to a conversation I had with our utility director, Scott Perry, today. And he asked me the question, he said, Eric, how much manufacturing in use of water do you want in the city using water and then selling it outside? So once you start creating water usage-type businesses, at what point does somebody come in with a water bottle? I mean, we know that's a very popular product out there where people bottle water and sell it. Also, you then have production of beer and wine, which those productions not only put a strain on your water usage, but they also put a strain on your sewer. And I, I think that's an important element to contemplate from, from a city. I mean, I'm all for economic development, but I do think everybody needs to be grounded that there are some of these facilities out there that, that may be a larger grab at water, too. I didn't see what they were looking for as, as far as production, and were they going to be selling ice regionally? Or was this ice just to be sold here in town? That, that's part of what I'm thinking about. I agree both with Counselor Stevens and the mayor that that area needs to be cleaned up significantly before any sort of processing happens. Up to and including, you know, when we think about water or food or things that people are ingesting. We also know there's not a local health inspector. The regional office is in El Paso, the sub-office is in San Angelo. Most of our restaurants in town haven't had the health inspector through. That's, that's another thing we've got to contemplate as a city, too.
So, Councilman Stevens, before we grant, before we grant a permit, I think we need to table it because there's a lot of questions that need to be answered before we can really consider this an item to be voted upon this evening.
So, so Mayor, I understand that, but I would like to amend the motion. Okay? That the council approve the application for establishment of an ice manufacturing plant located at the address with the following conditions. One, the entire property, the plot that this ice processing facility sits on, gets cleaned up and brought up to the ordinance standards. Number two, that a condition is that it only be allowed to sell ice within the city of Alpine. And number three, that must comply with the health code and standards and receive an inspection prior to operation.
Would you say city of Alpine or Brewster County?
City of Alpine.
Okay.
And the reason I say that, if they want to come back and suggest any expansion, they come back and they're going to have to address the water utilization issue. I, I think it's reasonable to expect, because we, the city, provide water, you know, to, to the residents and, you know, the city of Alpine. That makes sense. We do not provide water outside of the city. And so people are buying ice, whether it's at Porters, they're buying it, and that's water coming in, or they're buying it wherever. I think that's reasonable. And if they don't want to comply with that, they have to come back to council and says, there is the rationale. But I think that's a reasonable way to force that discussion that allows them to start process. And if they want to come back, they can come back with council. So that's my amendment.
So you're making that into an amended motion? Is there a second to the amended motion?
A second?
Okay. Any more discussion on it? Then we'll go ahead and vote on the amended motion, and then we'll go back to the original motion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, of the amended motion? Raise your right hand. Oppose. Like sign, motion carries. Now, let's go back to the original motion. Okay? It was seconded, so any discussion on the original motion? No discussion, so all those in favor of the original motion? Raise your right hand. Oppose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So then let's go over to item number three. And that's City Manager. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Item number, number four, yes, is discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the recommendation from planning and zoning concerning a conditional use permit application for the establishment of a dirtwork, septic service, and accessory retail business office. The property is located at 2210 North Highway 118. Record owner is Mr. Charles Saunders.
Mr. Mayor, again, getting the ball rolling, I propose that the City Council approve the recommendation of planning and zoning concerning a commercial, conditionally used permit application for establishment of a dirtwork, septic service, and accessory retail business office located at 210 North Highway 118. Charles Saunders being the R.
Okay, second?
I seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and second discussion.
So I, I guess, you know, again, this came up in, in the planning and zoning that I participated in. It's a commercially zoned area, so it's commercial, C1, which is, which is consistent with a retail area, or retail, which is what the individual is asking for. I think the broader question came up is what else is going on the property? And I presume was there any follow-up, Eric, after that David went and took a look at the property to say, is he compliant with all the other things?
He, he has been compliant.
Okay, okay. So, in my view, he's asking for retail, which seems reasonable in that area. That's what that's on.
More discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Let's get on to item number five, City Manager.
Right, item number five is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the first reading of Ordinance 2021-05-02 in ordinance amending Chapter 74, Parks and Recreation, Article 1, in, in general, to the Alpine Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, again, John, I propose City Council approve the first reading of Ordinance 2021-05-02 in ordinance amending Chapter 74, Parks and Recreation, Article 1, in general, to Alpine Code of Ordinances.
Okay, second?
Second?
Okay, there's a second discussion.
So, the context of this was predicated on two different elements. One, related to alcohol at the city parks. And this, the second related to dark skies. So the, the first thing that has come up relative to alcohol, and this is not So, the, the first thing that has come up relative to alcohol, and this is not to allow alcohol at city parks in perpetuity. This is in special event situations where it may be deemed appropriate for alcohol to be served at the city park. It would give the city manager or the public designate, i.e. the, the chief of police, the ability to, to approve an event. For example, Fourth of July, we have that event, we close down the street and alcohol is sold basically across the street. As we think about more outdoor events and venues that might be music related, do you want to be able to have a large, like with Viva Big Band or some other major event that comes in and the ability to sell alcohol at the park? So, that's one portion of it. The other portion is looking at it. Right now, we have some specific times that we're open, adjusting to dawn to dusk. But then we have dark sky initiatives where maybe we have a dark sky event in town where we're trying to dovetail off of the Starlight series that happens at McDonald's Observatory and we're trying to have a mini event use, whether it's Coconut Park, the edge of that, or something in that nature. Can we authorize and approve that sort of event to happen? Once again, it, it, it's per event, requires notification through the city manager and, and compliance with the police chief, so that we would do more regular patrols. So, that's the, the two suggested changes. Kirsten Moody worked back with Chris Rujia and Chief Martin on these discussions and I participated in, in those as well. So, that's, that's the nature of, of what's being contemplated here.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
So, Eric, as we look at this, it doesn't distinguish between beer and wine versus hard, the hard liquor. Was that a conscious decision or just hadn't been thought about? Because I think about beer and wine, you know, a lot of it deals with parks and parties and things like that. When you get to the hard alcohol and you get people shooting tequila, this would not include that. That's just a whole different set of issues that bubble up.
Yeah, I, I don't think we really matured in that conversation. It was more relative to just the beer and the wine for the specific distinct events.
I just know the reality is going to be, if this goes as is, I guarantee you the hard stuff's coming out. And I just think we really want to think about if that's the intent. Because right now, we tend to leave that to the bars and restaurants, which is terrific. We've stayed away from the parks.
Right.
You know, I know out on Thursday, Mercantile Exchange, having a beer out there would be terrific.
Right.
But I don't think we're going to be wanting people to have any stuff wrong out there. So, that's just a lot.
Right.
I don't know what's rest of council.
Where does it sit right now?
Well, right now, there's no, no alcohol permitted at all.
Not even by special permit?
Not even by a special permit.
I think going by special permit, but I don't think opening it up as a whole. You need to remember that, that, that parks are for children, the majority of it, too, that happen out there for children. I mean, most of our parks have children equipped in and maybe splash parks coming. I guess it's just people are on.
Well, and this wouldn't open it up for cart block use. This would be for an event, they would have to come petition the city manager office, an engagement with the police chief. We would analyze it, no different than what we do on road closures. So, every road closure has to come, chief has to review it, I have to review it and authorize it.
I do agree with Eric. I think we need to put some kind of specification exactly. I don't know, do you have like percentage of alcohol or, I mean, I don't know, but.
Councilman Stevens, and Councilman Stevens, did you make a motion?
Yes.
I did, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I missed it.
It's okay. Yeah, I made the motion.
Okay.
Chris, Chris seconded.
All right. Yeah, that's right. Chris did second it. Okay, I'm sorry, Chris. I apologize.
So, what, what do you think, Eric? Should we amend the motion to change it? To beer and wine, or do you think we ought to come, go spend some time, come back next meeting with changing language? Because we, I mean, we can amend this languages written, or do you want to get the parks folks to take a look?
Yeah, yeah, let me, I, I think it's substantive enough question. Let me go back and talk with Kirsten, talk with, you know, their board's got a meeting. I'm actually gonna, gonna address their board this next week. And that would be a good time to open up the discussion and chief and I'll talk a little bit more in depth about it. I go up and down, you know, I've been in communities where the, I mean, some of them, it's beer and wine in the park is permissive.
Yeah.
Others, it's only special use. Some, it's never, never. I think it ultimately is, is a determination of council and, you know, through discussion with city attorney, police chief, city manager, parks board and, and try to, to do something that just absolutely makes sense for Alpine. You know, I do know that Coconut Park is a wonderful park and it's a venue that you could do with that pavilion there, you know, like a band or something that it might draw more people. And I mean, part of the reason we just released the, the RFP for the concession license at midweek mercantile is that we just know that's going to drive more people to that venue and get them supporting the vendors that are out there. And the special events that we're talking about are ones also that would have vendors there too. I mean, think about what Kiwanis does with Fourth of July. So, is, is there ways to, to drive more people in the community there while still keeping it safe? Obviously, it's, it's not a Lollapalooza or something of that nature.
Would it be, maybe if we look into maybe the idea of them hiring security, just like they do for the use of the civic center?
Yeah, I mean, good, good point. I mean, that's something that could be beefed up in there that it, it's required to, I, because something chief and I talked about is, is the reason why he and I have to review these is i- if there was alcohol there, we would beef up security. But I think having, having that event pay for it as well, it's a good suggestion.
So, so based upon the discussion, I would propose we amend the motion to table this.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
Second?
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? None? All those in favor of the amended motion? Raise your right hand. Okay, oppose. Carries, now to get back to the original motion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Raise your right hand. Oppose and motion carries. Okay, so we're gonna. City manager's going to go back with the parks then? Okay, let's move on to item number six. City manager.
Yeah, this should be the easiest item on the list tonight. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero-five dash zero-seven, a resolution on the pool admission and pass rates for summer twenty-twenty-one at the Alpine Municipal Pool.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we approve the resolution for pool admission and pass rates for summer of twenty-twenty-one and get it open.
Hey, is there a second? Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Sir, do you just want to kind of share what the plan is?
Right, so we have ten lifeguards, we're, we've got training set up. The training will be done at our pool this year. It's a, it's a. And all we did with the, the pool admission and pass rates, we just duplicated what council approved last year and just left it at that. So, just trying to keep it real easy. Working back, certainly with the library, we'll do the book read passes that give kids free admission when they read so many books. And then working with Principal O'Brien over at the elementary school, the school's going to purchase a bunch of passes for some of the elementary school kids. So, should be a real good season.
Good deal.
Open date is?
Well, with what we have on training, I think we're actually going to be open Memorial Day. So, that, that's been all along. So, we're still, we're tracking on that. We, Lorena, God love her, she did some good work to find us a trainer.
Good. Okay, that's super.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Ready, item number seven, and that's, is Curry.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh-five dash oh-three in ordinance amending chapter ten, animals establishing regulations concerning feral cat colonies to the Alpine Code of Ordinances.
There's. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it just to get involved, we'll have the discussion.
Okay, we're ready for discussion.
So, what's a feral cat colony?
A feral cat colony is, I mean, there's people that have, there's, there's colonies of feral cats. They all live like in the neighborhood and they, that's the neighborhood they roam. And that's where they call themselves, that's where they say that they live and that's their area that they, that they live in. And they're feral cats.
So, so is, how does that get defined, Maria? I'm just, so if, if there's a feral cat colony, what's not a feral cat? I'm just trying to figure out what this does for us. And I, and so educate me because I have not been involved with.
So, in the ordinance, it says a feral cat means a domestic, a domestic cat who's been born and raised without contact with humans or a cat that has not had contact with humans for a significant period of time and has become unsocialized. They can also mean free roaming domestic cat, which is not owned. So, it's like a stray cat, but it's not really a stray cat. It's a feral cat. It's, it's a wild cat. A feral cat colony means any group of feral cats which have a keeper who is maintaining and caring for feral cats by providing food and water and other forms of sustenance. And a lot of those feral cat. So, a lot, I don't know if you guys know anybody, but there's a lot of people that actually like will dump like a bag of cat food out for these stray cats or these feral cats. And they, that's where the colony sort of goes for food. And that's going on, that happens all over town. And people, you know, I, I know several people that, that do that. I don't think that they're really supposed to be doing it because they're not actually feral cat keepers. They just feed all these wild cats. And a feral cat keeper means any person or organization harboring regularly feeding or having his or her possession in his or her possession, any feral cat. A person becomes a keeper when any person has possession or control over the animal and has fed the cat for three or more consecutive days. Also, a keeper can be any individual who permits a cat to habitually be or remain on or be lodged or fed within such person's property or premises.
So, thank you. That was helpful. So, at least understand that, I mean, there, I, I know there are, and, and right now feral cat keepers are illegal, correct?
Right. So, we're giving these feral cat keepers, colony keepers regulations so that they can do it legally. And we know that these cats are being, they're, they're going to be trapped, neutered, released. They're going to get trapped, neutered and put back into their colony so that their colony doesn't continue to grow and grow and grow and that these cats are being taken care of and they're going to keep, they're going to stay healthy.
So.
Go ahead.
So, so that, ultimately, I, my sense is, and I could be on the left field, which I normally am, our strategy has been to make sure feral cats are healthy. They don't infect domestic cats. And that they don't breed. So, in theory, there would at least be homo stasis, if I could use that old biology term, consistent enough for a feral cat, but the numbers aren't going to go up. My.
Right.
By authorizing feral cat colony keepers, that the number of feral cats would actually go up. And so, that's the worry I've got. Is there any complaint about that?
So, the, 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 this is going to go along with the trap neuter release and there's going to be, I don't know if you, if you read any of the ordinance, what, what they wanted, what we want to change in it. So, the feral cat colonies will have keepers and they're, they're going to get permitted to, to take care of these cats, but they have to also be sponsored. And so, the sponsors are going to help these keepers maintain this, this level of being able to keep the cats by making sure that they get microchipped, making sure that they get that they get neutered or spayed. And they're going to have to like report in with what's going on in their colony like. It says on here, what the reports that they want, they want the number and location of the colonies, the total number of cats in each colony and the number of cats from its colonies that have been vaccinated, spayed, and neutered. So, that's, that's what's, that's what we're trying to do is get these cats neutered and taken care of so that they are being, so they're, they're, they're healthy cats, they're not spreading disease to the other cats and they're not reproducing over and over and over again. And so, we'll be able to get a hold of the number of feral cats in town.
So, I presume Jennifer thinks this is a quality?
Yeah, her, Jennifer and Patty Culver are the ones who were putting this, who did most of the work on this. Patty, Patty's the one who's been doing all the trap neuter release stuff that, that she's, that she's been working on for the, the animal advisory board. And she did a lot of, she did all of the work on this, I think, most of the work. She got all these, all this language together. And we talked about it with Jennifer, we talked about it with the veterinarian, Mary Dodson. We, we've talked about this several times on our animal advisory board. We talked about it a lot.
It sounds like a grand experiment to me, but. I, I have to admit, I live, where I live, I got feral cats all over the place. And my reaction is, they take care of the mice, they take care of the other rodents. In addition to the red and gray fox I run on the property, I'm a happy camper because they keep all the barbits down. So, I can't complain, but I kind of live on the edge of town. So, I'm, but always, but you guys are smart about this than I am. So, thank you.
And you did say they were going to be chipped also, Maria?
That's the plan. We've, we've been talking about that too, how we're going to get them microchipped because that, that needs to happen. So, we know where they go. We know where they belong, which colony they belong to.
Right. And then you pick them up again, you know, they've already been neutered or spayed.
Yeah, they'll have like their ear notched or something too, to, to, to let some, let the person who picks them up know that they've been, that they've been spayed or neutered.
Okay, good deal. I just wanted to make sure that they had some kind of marking on them or y'all could determine where they already been through the process.
Yeah, Mayor Eric, Council Chairman Scott Fleming has a comment or question?
Okay.
We already find a lot of feral cats, I don't find no ground nesting birds.
Oh.
I, I couldn't hear what he said.
Oh, his comment was, anywhere you find a lot of feral cats, you find no ground nesting birds.
Yeah.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing? I don't know.
I think it's kind of a bad thing. I think you want birds.
Yeah, because they, they've come into my yard at night when my dogs are up, are put up and raided the, the birds when they're nesting.
Well, this, this will really be able, this will, this isn't making it so that we have more feral cats. This is going to get it so that we don't continue to have, you know, feral cats forever and ever. This is going to limit, this is going to make that number shrink or stay where it is and then start shrinking. It's not going to continue to grow and spread.
Will you just put dye on their ears, then a notch in it?
They notch the ears. That's what they do at the vet.
Well, they like their ears notched, you know?
Okay, I'm going to call for the quote. All those in favor of the, of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign? Oppose like sign? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Let's move to item number eight, city manager.
They were at, uh, item number eight to discuss, consider and take appropriate action to approve the special use permit applications. Uh, as identified on the agenda, there are fourteen of them labeled A through N.
We'll start with you and take them on separate then.
Let me, let me ask a question. Uh, and I'd like to ask the question of the city attorney. Do we have any choice on these?
Well, if they're, if they're meeting our ordinance regulations, I would say no, because we can't arbitrarily pick and choose.
Yeah, because what I thought I heard earlier was, and, and we talked about it earlier and the information discussion item, uh, that I presented. We can certainly establish requirements, regulations associated with trash bins, lighting, noise, insurance, inspections, uh, ensuring hot fund is paid and parking. But we don't get to decide whether or not we can approve one or the other from a zoning perspective.
I believe that is correct. And, and our, our requests will be on these as, as the violations occur, we'll be able to reject these and, and withdraw their permits. We'll be able to, uh, we can revoke their permits if they're continually violating our city ordinances as far as nuisance warnings. Which is what the littering, the noise, all of that stuff is.
And, and, and we have to define that. Uh, in my senses, and as an amendment to the requirements under short-term rentals, we would have to put criteria in place. So no longer it is not arbitrary, it's defined. So for example, if, uh, if someone's feet, you know, uh, Jody Cole has as the judge first offense, second offense, third offense.
Right.
Uh, and the penalties go up accordingly. Uh, and we'll have to define each of those discussions that gives chief the ability to, uh, write citations.
Right. And that, that takes care of the arbitrariness because if you're
Do we want to do a motion first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, no, because I, so I'm, so I'm, I'm leading to the motion. I, I did that because I'm, I'm about to object to myself as a point of order.
Okay, okay.
If everybody gets a start with the ordinance.
Yeah.
And those who violate it, that's how you kick out the ones that are causing issues.
Yes. So to that point then, and so I appreciate that clarification. Thank you, Eric, because I going before I object to myself. Uh, I propose, uh, that city council approve the special use permit applications delineated under action item number eight. That's the motion.
Okay, is there's, most has been seconded, discussion?
So now discussion, and I know there's going to be people who are going to raise questions. So, uh, so, so Carl has hand up first, mayor.
Okay, Carl.
The only other statement I had to make is that there's an ordinance on the books as far as I know. That ought to be rescinded if people who have these votes of casitas are writing them out. Because right now under the ordinance, it's still legal. So that should be addressed in some way.
So, so I agree with you, Carl, uh, that because it violates the requirements of zoning. Uh, and we're going to have to work our way through that. That is one of the items I had on the list. It's got an interest. I, I, I agree with you on that. There's another gentleman.
Hey, who's next?
The person by name and ward and what you represent.
My name's Shane O'Neil. I live in Ward one. Um, I've been asked by, uh, the neighboring residents of the eight oh six, uh, or Cockrell street property to talk to you about the legal implications of that. Um, I need to respectfully disagree, um, with the attorney Wilson um, on her reading of Tar versus Timberwood Park, Hummer's owner association. Um, in Tart versus Timberwood Park, the question there, they were analyzing a zoning restriction and they found it to only be structural, not a used base restriction. They did not find that the Texas constitution out, you know, prohibits used base restrictions. Um, they specifically said that what they were doing was to, I'll read the language to you. Um, in discerning the drafter's intent, and they're talking about the drafters of the rules of the homeowners association. Courts must consider whether the covenants restrictions apply to the use of the building or the nature of the physical structure to be erected on the property. Accordingly, courts have often distinguished between use restrictions and structural restrictions, and have declined to conflate the two. Uh, with that, if, if I have a copy of the ordinance, if that would be helpful, because I'm going to refer to it, can I pass this up?
I've got the ordinance, but the others may not, so. So translate that into English.
Yes, sir. So we can enforce ordinances to sell us how they use the property and how to build it, right? Um, and so the question is, the question in Tar was what does their ordinance say about building versus using the property? And in Tar, the Texas Supreme Court said the ordinance talks about what we can build on the property, whether we can build just one house or whether we can build a casita as well. Um, and in a single use facility, obviously you wouldn't be able to build a casita. Um, and they said specifically found that the ordinance in Tar didn't have to do with how you use it. The issue that keeps bringing up being brought about the North Cockro property, and I don't know if it applies to the others on the list, is that it's being used to house multiple families. Specifically, it's being listed on Airbnb as two separate listings. Um, that I have, you know, one listing has two lots, the other listing has another two lots, and then the owners live on the property as well. So at a minimum, it's a three-family occupancy use. And then the question becomes, does the Alpine City ordinance prohibit that? And it does. In section, in R one, it says, yeah, or in section two of the, of the zoning ordinance, it says in the R one district, no building or land shall be used, that's the use part. Um, and no building shall hereafter be erected or structurally altered. That's the structural part unless otherwise provided in this ordinance, except as described by the following. Single-family residential detached. And then we have a further provision that said, that even contemplates this concept that this sort of, um, an R one, uh, house would be used as a short-term rental. Um, and that's where we get into the conditional use permit. So Alpine's city ordinance, um, is very different from the one at issue that, uh, in Tar that the Supreme, uh, the Supreme Court of Texas dealt, dealt with. It's also very different from the provision in, uh, Zatar, Zatar uh, versus City of Austin that the Third Circuit Court of Appeals dealt with. In that one, they were specifically targeting short-term rental property. Our ordinance doesn't do that. Our ordinance says you can use a short-term rental property if it's consistent with the zoning regulations. And there's actually thirteen different criteria that the council is supposed to consider before issuing, issuing, and if you want to go through those criteria, they repeat over and over again. What we care about is that the, the, the conditional use is consistent with how the property is zoned. So we're looking at the Cockro property, it's an R one property. Um, it, the way it's zoned is for single-family use. And so in determining whether to issue a permit or not, the council should be concerned with whether, uh, the, the permit is for a, a, a single-family use. If they, if the owners wanted to, um, you know, make it one Airbnb listing, say, you know, come use this, uh, for your, you know, thirteen-person family vacation, your family reunion, um, then that would be consistent, um, with, with our city's ordinances. Um, and the, I believe it's item L, um, I, I personally know, um, Adam and Linda Rothie. Their house has two bedrooms. It's in an R one, um, and it's listed on Airbnb as, you know, one rental. Maybe my time's up. And, uh, now if they were to create two listings and say bedroom one and bedroom two, and you guys share the kitchen, that would be, um, you know, that would be in, in inconsistent, um, with what the ordinance requires. And, uh, you know, to the issue that, uh, Councilman, um, uh, Stevens was getting to earlier. Um, is that this, you don't have to wait for a violation. It's fairly easy for the council to go property by property and say, um, you know, y'all are, you know, just ask the question, are you listen, are you listing this as one? Um, you know, a single occupancy or a single listing on either VRBO or Airbnb? Yes, okay, then it, you know, if it's R one, it meets our criteria, or if it's R two and it's a house and a casita, if the owner occupies the house, they'd be able to list the casita. If the owner is absent, they'd be able to list the house and the casita.
Does the city attorney have a comment?
The problem we're going to have on that, if, 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 you know, that, that's his argument. Uh, we already have all of these established short-term rentals. So I think we're going to have to go back and research that and make sure that all of those as well.
So, I'm going first.
Wasn't the zoning, I mean, most of the zoning was done prior to STRs coming into it, but
Exactly.
And right now there is no, we cannot say no to an STR. So in essence, does our, the, do our provisions, do they outweigh what the law has said, stated that we cannot say no to an STR?
So you can't, you can't say to no to an STR because it's an STR. Um, but that, the fact that it's an STR doesn't override our zoning ordinances, right? So we've had zoning ordinances for a long time saying, these are single-family use homes. These are multi-family use homes, and they wouldn't apply just to Airbnb. They would apply to college kids and they would apply to, you know, other uses. And your point is almost certainly accurate that there have been people who have been violating the ordinances for some time. Um, but the, and, and there's a ground, there's actually a grandfather clause in, um, our ordinances, uh, which would account for that. Um, and, and the question becomes whether that was abandoned for, I think it's sixty days in a three-year period of time, if I recall from briefly reading it this morning. Um, but, but here, these applications are certainly not grandfathered in. Um, and the council's decision on how to revisit past ones and see whether they were operating before the passing of zoning laws, I, I'm not going to get into that.
Yeah, I, I think the, the larger challenge you're going to have, I mean, you know, backing up to a couple of action items ago, I mean, first of all, council just approved two conditional use permits, uh, that are not in alignment with the zoning. And so we just did that half an hour ago. Nobody objected to that. The second thing is when we look at how people use properties in the city of Alpine, it is pervasive, pervasive the amount of short-term rental and long-term rentals that do not meet R one and R two zoning. I mean, I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say there's at least a hundred of them. And so every long-term rental in the city, when they turn over that tenant, are you going to tell them, no, they can't rent that thing out anymore? If I don't, if you don't meet the current zoning requirements, that's the challenge at hand. And honestly, in that R one, I mean, right down the street from six oh two North Cockrell is Casablanca. That's in an R one, that's four units being rented out. I will tell you, my parents are two blocks away from her, four units in an R two. Okay, there, and then when you get into R two, you've got minimum square footage requirements. So Carl was part of planning and zoning. He was the chair of planning and zoning when they established that seven hundred and fifty square feet. We have multiple STRs, if you look through the packets that are in R twos that are sub seven hundred and fifty square feet. We have multiple long-term rentals that are sub seven hundred and fifty square feet. And this is a major challenge. I think it, it comes down to the identity of Alpine. What does Alpine want to be?
I mean, you're either going to be consistent or you're not. That's the thing. But, but my reading of those cases, they still go back and they said that, uh, the, it's, it's not, uh, it's not a zoning interest because both the owner occupied and your short-term not owner are more residential in nature. As long as they're classified as residential, there you're going to have that issue.
So I'm not disagreeing with that. That, that analysis, I think, speaks to whether you can prohibit short-term rentals in general. Right? And that's not the argument I'm making. Um, I'm saying short-term rentals are fine. I agree with, I think, what you led off with in the analysis where you said short-term rentals are here and they're here to stay. Um, because I, I, short-term rentals are a residential use, and I think the Third Circuit, um, was fairly persuasive in Zabarkey. Uh, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, versus City of Austin. I'm just going to call it the City of Austin case because that's easier. Um, but they, they were very persuasive in saying, you know, you have a property right in your house, um, and you can lease it out for a year. Um, you can lease it out for five days. That doesn't change, your, your, the nature of your property right doesn't change. Um, based on, you know, the duration of, or your, your decision on how long to lease it for. Um, what is kind, what is important to a property right, especially respecting other property rights, is respecting the zoning decisions um, that the city has made. And I, I agree, uh, you know, based on my own personal observation, and I think it would merit some study um, to see, you know, that this is, uh, at least a fairly prevalent problem, um, in Alpine. Um, and the inconsistent application of it is a problem, but at the same time, the council has zoning ordinances that it's called on to enforce. These zoning, zoning ordinances don't, don't discriminate against short-term rentals, which is, I think, we, we agree on that part. Um, I, I think they should be, I think the zoning ordinances um, are, are constitutional under the Texas constitution. I don't think, um, Tar, Cassidy doubt on them. And I think the council should enforce those only ordinances as written when, you know, confronted with new applications. Um, and if people want to say that they were grandfathered in, then that's a separate issue that, uh, the council can deal with as those come up.
Well, I think as, as Councilor Stephen addressed, we do have a lot of work to do. We have to catch up our ordinances. But I don't think this is a time for us to start saying no, when we have told all these people prior, yes. Not only did we say yes and allow them, these people have made a lot of expenses to start these businesses. And for us to go back and say no, I, I, I agree with Dr. with Councilor Stevens. We need to amend our, our, our ordinances, and he has stated that he is willing, more than willing to help with that. So I guess all we're asking for is give us a chance to, to change our ordinances to address that. Because I don't feel that now is the time to go back and tell these over one hundred businesses. Oh, you know what? We made a mistake. We need to own up to the mistake that we as council made and try to change and rectify what needs to be changed.
You can't do it.
Wait, I'm sorry.
You can't go back now and say these other people can't be doing it. We need to work on our ordinance is what we need to do, I think.
I, I agree, but the mere fact that it's retroactive is not determinative. Um, there's a lot of analysis in City of Austin about retroactivity and how it applies, and their analysis is very specific to an ordinance that discriminates against short-term rentals. This our ordinance does. It's not susceptible to that analysis. Um, but I completely agree, um, with what you're saying. Um, I, I guess my suggestion would be, um, because, you know, if the council, if the city does decide to change the ordinances, um, it's going to have to work a, a pretty significant change um, in order to permit, um, and, you know, this is something like a, uh, an R one, uh, building, um, to be, you know, used by a minimum of three, if not up to sixteen families. Um, and, and so I, I would at least say, you know, if we're going to recognize that we've made a mistake, um, table these applications, um, and tell there's a, a time to, uh, address the, uh, you know, address the, uh, the zone, to modify the zoning. It just seems counterintuitive to have a zoning ordinance and willfully say, we're going to disregard it in the sake of consistency.
So you want us, a lot of these businesses have been operating for months, maybe even years.
They, they very well may qualify to be grandfathered in, but that would be a showing they would have to make.
I think you're talking about the new ones coming in, like these fourteen right now.
Absolutely.
But some of these fourteen have been
Wait a second, yeah, these, let, let's go back to, I know when I came back in twenty nineteen. One of the things that I had outlined in my first hundred and eighty day plan, well, let me, let me go back to twenty sixteen. When Robert was working with the Planning and Zoning Commission at the time, Robert specifically told the Planning and Zoning Commission, short-term rentals are coming, okay? What do y'all want to do about them? Okay, this is going to be a big issue. And the language that was inserted in twenty sixteen, recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission, approved by council, did identify the conditional use, uh, permit process along with uh, that it was listed as VRBO, but it was short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts. Okay, so when I think about a bed and breakfast, I don't, I've never been in a bed and breakfast before. That's not less than one that's not less than one family living unit. And that was specifically put in the R1. So intentionally, I mean, that happened in 2016. Planning and zoning recommended it, Carl was the, the chairman of the, the Planning and Zoning Commission at the time. Council approved it, the mayor was the mayor at the time, and Councilor Stevens or Mayor Pro Tem was on council at the time. When I, that, that fee was established in 2017, as Rick outlined in his, in his, we had about 14 of them running at the time. When I came back in 2019, we had close to 50 people now running short-term rentals, close to 100 units out there, being run between those, those 50 people. And in that 180-day plan, what, the reason we contemplated is because we knew people weren't paying their hot tax. So we built the new ordinance simply to get people to register and pay their hot tax. So like these 14 people that are here tonight, these are people that have been operating, okay? We went through this process, we halted it in early, well, late March of last year because of coronavirus and pandemic, and we were trying to be sensitive to our residents. Okay, that's the reason we halted at that point. Late in the year, we came back up, re-looked at the short-term rental ordinance. There was never a question about land use in the amount of, of families in an R1 or an R2. Okay, it was simply about discussions around insurance requirements and the inspection, okay? And, and parking, that, that's all we talked about was, was the use of it, okay? So then we went out and, in, in, in this, this ordinance now gave us the ability to go back to people who weren't paying their hotel occupancy tax and weren't registered with the city, and enforce the fact that they needed to identify who they were and, and most importantly, pay their hot tax. In fact, we weren't even concerned about the permit fee. We said, hey, if you're paying your hot tax, the first 350 bucks, we're waiving. And then all you're gonna have to do is every year come in, pay your $100 permit fee to get your, in your fire inspection, that's it, okay? So the whole notion was these 49 people that are out there operating their businesses, do the right thing, register, we'll approve the permit, okay? So it wasn't until that conditional use permit application went out and the letters went out, that we started getting these complaints. Quite honestly, that's when the complaints started coming in, because we actually sent letters out. Chief and I look at noise complaints, we look at these things all the time. And it never once has the chief sat down with me and said, hey Eric, these short-term rentals are a real challenge in the community. They're causing chaos within the neighborhoods, because they simply weren't being reported in any sort of magnitude to him. So we, we structured an application process out, sent it out to the people who were participating in good faith. They filled them out, many of them very quickly. If you look at the spreadsheet that's included in there, there's 50% of them that hadn't filled out that application yet, okay? And those are the ones we're really concerned about, because when they don't fill them out, now we're gonna be able to go and cite them, because they need to fill out the permit application, let us know who they are and pay their hotel occupancy tax. That's the whole reason we did this. And now we're getting into this question about utilization on an R1 and an R2. I get the frustration there, but I'm gonna tell you, as, as somebody who's lived in and around Alpine since 1978, these residential neighborhoods have a load of apartments and casitas, and they rent them out. And in fact, we have in residential areas, four plexes and six plexes as well. Why those were approved over time, I can't tell you, but that's what's happened. That's the challenge now in front of council and planning and zoning, and it's not an easy fix, okay? So if we table these things till it gets fixed, then what do we tell the, what do we tell the 49 people, okay? Or, or anybody that's in a residential area? Do we tell them, you can't operate, shut down? And then do we go into the long-term rental people and say, look, you're out of compliance, you gotta shut down too? We already have, our number one issue in this town is affordable housing. We are gonna crater people.
And we're only gonna say no to 14 people that have had the decency to apply for the permit. We have a list of, you said what, 50? There's still probably another 25, another 30, another 40 that have never stepped up. So you're basically asking us to punish these 14 people who did what they're told and attempted to get a special permit.
Well, my argument is that the people who don't apply should definitely be punished. The city takes remedies against them. But if I could just make two, two points. One, it does say bed and bread, bed and breakfast, and I'll just, like, I agree, I've never said something, stated somewhere this called a traditional bed and bread, bed and breakfast and not say bread. You make your restaurant. I've never stayed in a traditional bed and breakfast that was single occupancy, but I've stayed in a lot of Airbnbs that were single occupancy. And so from a textual level, I slightly disagree there. But on the principle, absolutely, you know, there's a long history in Alpine of short-term rentals. My point is that this council needs to take into account what happens to the people who live around the short-term rentals as they explode in popularity, which is what's happening right now. Because when you buy a house in an R1 area, the expectation is that you're not living next to a hotel. And so there's, there's a real negative impact on the neighbors around there and potentially their property values. And I think that the council needs to be equally cognizant of the neighbors as well as the owner's ability to, you know, earn money off of their, and it's a residence. It's not supposed to be a, a commercial building, it's, it's a residence, that's why it's called R and then one. And finally, just on, I agree that affordable housing is a problem here. And I don't think this is a problem with all of the Airbnbs, but those that are occup, those that are owned by non-resident owners who only lease them out, especially as short-term rentals are arguably causing, you know, are increasing the problem of a lack of affordable housing, because they are making money off of the tourists coming in for the Airbnbs and taking another house out of the market that would otherwise be available for somebody who's a resident here. I, I'm not arguing that those should be disallowed, but I just think it's important to keep that in mind when you're thinking about the, the, the impact of the decisions that are on, if, if, on the availability of, you know, affordable housing in Alpine.
Going back to an ordinance that you keep saying, does R1, does the special use not allow that?
And, and so absolutely, the, this, you're, the council is permitted to grant these certificates. And I'm not arguing that all of them should be denied. I'm arguing that the ones that should be denied are the ones that are inconsistent with the zoning. So for, it exists as item L is a two-bedroom house that's listed on Airbnb as a, as something that you can rent. That's consistent, that, that's consistent with what the ordinance tells you to do. It says, you know, it says under the 13 or something considerations in granting the permit, the overriding consideration is, does it meet with the zoning and then other basic things about health and safety? And you have the application, I haven't reviewed Ls, but I, you know, at least on the, whether it complies with the zoning, it does, right? It's, it's leased to single families for, you know, a short period of time. And the ordinance doesn't say there's any problems with having a short period of time. But when we get to, for example, A, that's a at least three-family occupancy that is zoned for one family, and therefore, under those 13 factors that the council's supposed to consider, ought to fail. That, that's my.
Can I ask that we hear from David, David Hill? He's, he's the building inspector.
Yeah, I mean, David and I spoke earlier today, what I would share with you, and I think David's on.
I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, he, he and I talked about him coming this evening. Yeah, go, go ahead, David.
Well, I mean, Paul, we, we understand that STRs are non-conforming uses, basically, to district regulations. That's basically what it's summed, it's summed up to be. That's why STRs are going through the S or the CUP application process. So these district, district regulations are being used or changed. Part of the zoning district regulations are being changed through the CUP application process. So part of the prior special permits or that are, are in use right now are already legally established pursuant to a specific use permit prior to the date of the adoption of the zoning regulations. And that's in section 20.15. Also too, in our ordinances, and I don't have the exact ordinance, that was written pre-63, I believe. There's on the R1 district, two primary structures are allowed on one block with multiple meters, electric meters. So what we did, in the, in essence, for this STR ordinance is to allow all of the special use permitting through all of the districts, the zoning districts, whether it be C1, R1, R2. But everything is under the conditional use permit written out in the ordinances. So all the requirements are in the new ordinance that's been written. So technically, I mean, if you think about it, is a 14 people in, in an R1 short-term legal? Well, not to the zoning, not to the district regulations, but through the CUP, they would become legal.
One, one other thing, just from council perspective, we are getting close to 9:00 PM, so you'll, as we, as we get to, within a couple of minutes, you'll have to make a motion to continue or a motion to adjourn till tomorrow.
I promise to keep it west in three minutes.
So, the, just from a council procedural standpoint, yeah, we either have to, at 9 o'clock postpone the meeting or agree to continue the meeting.
I think motion that we continue.
Okay, so Mayor, did you hear the comment? Andy, you there?
There he is. There he is. Okay.
So, so because we're approaching 2100, which according to our procedure requires we either terminate the meeting and continue tomorrow evening, or we make a motion to go beyond 2100. Chris Rodriguez just made the motion that we continue the meeting beyond 2100.
Okay, is there a second on that?
So with the motion and we have a second, Martine, just second.
Yeah, you've, you've frozen, Mayor.
Okay, in the absence of the mayor, I'll go ahead and call for the question. All in favor of the motion to continue the meeting beyond 9 o'clock to 2100? Please signify by either raising your hand or saying aye. We have two, three here, and Betty and Maria?
Five to zero.
Okay, thank you, okay, motion passes, we continue the meeting. Now with that, we have someone who wants to speak.
My name is Dennis Foley, I live in Ward 5 at 601 North Cockrell. My wife Rosalind stands here with her about three and a half years. We're immediately to the west of the first property in your group of properties in question. Please recall, recall that that property was removed from consideration at your April 20 meeting and table with the request that the neighborhood worked on some possible middle ground solutions. The area in our neighborhood has always been zone R1. My family's lived there for 54 years. It's always been a nice, quiet neighborhood. And, and certainly, business was not going on in the neighborhood in that sense. Tonight, you have heard objections from all points of the compass, from the east, west, north. I'm from the west and also from the south. So as the city manager said, y'all asked. And in fact, people stepped up from all the blocks surrounding this property and are saying, we would ask you not to approve this special use permit, which as I understand it, exists in perpetuity as long as the applicants own this home. And so this could be for several decades and, and changes the quality of life potentially in our neighborhood. The special use permit is for short, short-term rentals in this R1 home. Assuming their, their website advertises that there is many as 16 guest capacity per night, and assuming that there are four family members living in the R1 home, that's as many as 20 people living in this home on a given night. And with those 16 guests and the four family members, 20 people come to vehicles that bring them, that need parking, the traffic noise, and in this case, motorcycle noise is a frequent visitor, party noise, pet noise, light pollution, and privacy issues when we want to open our windows for a cool summer breeze. There have been cigarette plots along our street in front of our house, 20 people's worth of trash in the dumpster in the alley, which is sometimes overflowing. There actually are two dumpsters in that alley and they both get pretty full. The increased traffic driving up and down the alley on the north edge of the quarter-block property threatens the natural gas meter, which is unprotected at this time, which Carl spoke to. A, a group of us neighbors did make an attempt to put together a middle ground. My wife and I, I confess, did walk up the, the front drive of the property in question, rang the doorbell, apparently no one was home, there was no answer. So we did in fact put our middle ground suggestions into the door sill and, and walked back to our home across the street to the west. That evening, at about 10 o'clock at night, we were served with a notice of criminal trespass by the, the neighbors from 602 North Cockrell. And all of our neighbors that have dared to protest this action were also served that night at about that time, I believe. We saw the cops again the next day, in the middle of the day. And this, you know, this is a non-issue, this is not something that the police department should have been asked to waste their time with. The policeman that came to our door at 10 o'clock actually got called away on an actual police call and had to go help somebody. When, when he had gotten me out of bed, we had to run to get our driver's license back from him before he drove off to actually go on a real police call, it's quite annoying. Anyway, I don't think our neighbors want to compromise on this issue. So I respectfully ask you to deny this special use permit in the case of 602 North Cockrell. Thank you.
The next person who wants to make a comment is Adam Rothie.
Okay. Mr. Rothie. He's beat, Joe.
Big fan of Zoom, it's, it's been, it's been a great experience over the last year and a half. Appreciate y'all taking the time, appreciate you moving to extend the meeting past 9 o'clock. My wife and I, we own the, a little property, 704 East Sol Ross. We lived in Alpine from 2016 to 2019. We loved it so much, we bought a little house so that we'd always have a place to come back to. And of course, the only way that works is if we operate it as a short-term rental, so that, you know, certain times out of the year, coming back in June, we'll be back there in July during the summer when my kids are out of school to hang out with friends, Nate Curry and, and kids from the Montessori School and, and, you know, just, it's, 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 it's good to see some of your, your familiar faces. I, I just wanna, I'm also an attorney, I practice now in Dallas, and I've read the cases that, that Ms. Wilson cited. I agree with the positions that she's taking and, and her interpretation of those cases. Very sympathetic with the property owners around this 602 Cockrell. And, but like Ms. Wilson said, you know, the way to, the way to handle issues like that is through the, through the ordinances, you know, nuisance ordinances, noise ordinances. Not to punish everybody else who's trying to do things the right way and trying to be a contributing member to the Alpine community through our taxes, through our, through, by employing people to, to manage the property, to clean the properties, et cetera. So I, I just wanted to kind of give the, my thoughts. You know, I, I, I know that a lot of applications have been approved. I feel a little, I guess, I don't know, it, it's, it's a little upsetting that, that our little rental is kind of caught up in this giant dust storm related to a single rental when. Um, dust storm related to a single rental when so many others have been, have been approved. Uh, and you know, it, it just, so. I just appreciate y'all being conscientious of the law. I, I agree with Ms. Wilson's interpretation of the law. I would ask, would ask the council to approve the applications. And like Councilman Stevens says, work on the, the ordinances so that there's a consistent. Um, application and enforcement of ordinances that protect property owners, uh, protect the, the neighbor's right. To, you know, to the peaceful enjoyment of their property. And I guess one point I would make. Kind of against what, uh, the last gentleman said, these aren't, these aren't, uh. These approvals aren't in perpetuity. It's an annual approval process. And, uh, if, if people are out of compliance, as I think members of the council have pointed out, Ms. Wilson have pointed out. If they're out of compliance, then, uh. With the ordinances and there's documented complaints, uh, then their application may not be approved going forward. So. This is, this is not something that, you know, proving these today doesn't, doesn't mean that, that the, uh, neighbors to six oh two cockerel. Are going to, you know, suffer in perpetuity, uh, uh, with impunity. So thank you for your consideration. Really appreciate it. Uh, appreciate your work and, and service on the council. Uh, in making Alpine just a, a great community that, that, uh, people love to live in, people love to visit. Um, we look forward to seeing y'all again soon. Thank you.
Gio, anybody else? Mayor, we have two more here in council chambers. Okay.
Yes, my name is Ned Allen. I, uh, have my own properties in Alpine, but I. Judy Freeman is my partner and so I reside with her most of the time. A couple of things, uh. You know, I do a little construction on my own and, uh, flip a few houses all over West Texas. And there's no ten foot fence between Judy's house and the house in question. Number one, that's just whole face by. The other thing, uh. I want to bring up is you keep talking about forty or fifty Airbnb's. There's twenty seven hundred households in Alpine. You know, what about us, the rest of us? Okay? Those of us who weren't asked, those of us who want the zoning laws to be enforced. That don't want this passed. So you take out those hundred people or two hundred. There's twenty five hundred other people that live in Alpine that don't necessarily want all the Airbnb's hat. I'm gonna tell you right now, I look at a hotel across the street and I'm gonna choose. There's room number one with a one, there's room number two with a two, there's room number three with a three. There's a room number four and their site says there's a room number five. In my mind, that's a small hotel. Okay? And I don't think that any of the neighbors bought their, their homes. That they've done remodeling to and kept, kept up with, expecting to be next door to a hotel. Okay? So I'm asking on Judy's behalf and all the rest of us homeowners in Alpine. That this not be approved.
Thank you, sir.
And counselor, I promise the last one will speak tonight. Um, regarding the, the last point this gentleman made, no, the neighbors did not buy a property next to short term. The neighbors bought a property next to a swingers compound that was held for sex parties, the better part of forty years. I would anticipate that a couple of short term rentals are much better off. As far as lots number one, two, three, and four, lots one and two went together, lots three and four went together. You'd have the floor plan in front of you. Um, there is one bathroom that connects lot one and two, one bathroom that connects lot three and four. Um, I want to remind council that we are a registered compliant established S T R. We have no official complaints on both, none, over the last two and a half years or so. The property in question is not a typical fifteen hundred square foot house like that Fleming or typical. Fifteen hundred square foot house like Judy Freeman. This is a seventy four hundred square foot complex. If you look at the parking layout, and I know parking's been addressed several times here. There's eighty six linear feet minimum of parking. In a private parking lot that has been on that property since nineteen seventy eight. To give you an example, citing, um, Miss Peel's photograph of six motorcycles in that parking lot. That parking lot itself can accommodate fifty five motorcycles. The parking lot can accommodate nine cars. On top of that, we have a circular driveway up front that can accommodate another six cars. Or another fifteen motorcycles or so. We are well below standard occupancy limits of two people per bedroom plus an inmate. Um, regarding the complaint about noise and events, we have had two events at the property over the last year and a half. Both of those events were attended by locals. One lasted from three o'clock in the afternoon to five o'clock in the afternoon. It was an eighty year old birthday party. And one was a wedding recently for fourteen people that had two overnight guests. And they ran from four o'clock to eight o'clock. And the three to five P M. only had three overnight guests. There is an event going on at my house that I have the right to do so. Um, you know, we have a large company of, you know. We have had events for our employee at my house. The house is set up for entertainment. However, the, the assertions that our Airbnb guests are somehow having parties is an absolute falsehood. Most of you have at least driven by the property, you know that there is a ten foot fence around the entirety of the property with exception of a service gate. Um, which is where the, the lines got cut on my, on my lights. Now I do want, I do want to take heed to my neighbors concerned. So in order to do so within the next seven days. I'm gonna turn down the wattage on the lights that are on the balcony that have been there since nineteen seventy eight. And that are going to be on whether they're short term rentals or not. And we already have plans on our masterment list to raise the height of the gate. Across the street from Judy Freeman's, but remember the entire property is gated. Some of it is, is. The remainder certainly by ten foot high fence. Um, I'd actually called David Hale last week to ask how high I could put the gate. Not because of Judy Freeman's complaining, but because of the continued harassment by my neighbors. So, um, the gas meter, the incident was over a decade before we bought the property. Um, so you know, I moved to Alpine, Texas in the year two thousand, which we pointed out to you. So, um, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm addressing council, thank you. Um, I don't have an objection to the gas company coming and reinforcing the gas meter. But I'm assuming that the gas company doesn't want me instructing a building around their gas meter. Am I correct? So the neighbors, I'm probably the most accessible S T R owner in town. The neighbors can call our business downtown. They can send a message to our website. They can call my cell phone. What they cannot do is trespass my property when there has been a trespassing sign there for the last three years. That is illegal. That is a contrary to what Dennis fully believes trespass is a legitimate crime. So the trespass call was made as soon as I got home and realized that somebody had trespassed on my property. The safety of my community is important. It may not be important to Mr. Foley, but it is absolutely important to me. I would have to answer any questions you may have about the layout, you guys have the floor plan. Um, I know most of you have been by the house at night. You've seen how dim the lighting is. Um, but if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them this time. Thank you, council.
Uh, the last public comment request I have is for Matthew Rogo.
Hello all, uh, is it required to, uh, share a video if so I can?
No, not, not if we haven't seen it ahead of time. A video?
No.
Yeah, we've, we've had too much Zoom bombing, Matthew. We, we restrict screen sharing. That, that's gotta come to me ahead of time. All right, I, did, did you have something you want to address the council?
Hello?
Yes.
Uh, s- sorry, what, did you hear me begin my s- talking?
No.
My apologies. Um, the background might should be done. So I just wanted to thank the board, um, for, you know, considering this short term special use permit. Uh, thank the employees of the city, uh, specifically Keela and, and Gio. They've been very helpful. Uh, as individuals like myself have navigated, uh, this ordinance. Um, they've been very approachable and very transparent. And so that's, uh, an ode to the city employees to have helped out so much. Uh, a little bit about myself and my family. I've only lived here in Alpine for two years. Um, but I'm very, uh, proud to speak of all of the individuals we have. You know, hosted on in our casita, uh, for which you have the plan there and the, uh, forty positive reviews. Uh, many of which are returned customers. Of course, I've been very transparent with my neighbors. Uh, spoke to them about this before and continue to speak to them, uh, about operating a casita. So. As this board considers future ordinances, I would. I would certainly ask that you, uh, look at it from the perspective of what is positive for Alpine. Uh, the, uh, amount of folks that come and stay in these Airbnb's because they hop. They provide an opportunity for a family to stay for several days versus maybe a small hotel room. Uh, the amount of money they spend here, the remittances, remittances through taxes that come back to the city. And as you approach, uh, new ordinances, uh, you know, continue to engage the individuals who operate. These as well as the individuals, uh, who live around them. And, uh, use our local laws for what they're meant to do, which is to, you know, remediate and take care of any of the issues that. Come up from time to time at any one of these locations, you know, none of which that I've experienced. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. All, all right, Gio, do we, do we have any additional?
We only have two participants raising their hands, but both of them have already made a comment tonight.
Okay.
May, may I just please, uh, make one, um, uh, what I think is a very rational request? And that is that, um, it shouldn't be so hard for council to separate out. The multifamily requests from the very reasonable. Single family casitas or single family occupancy rentals. The one that I object to has twenty people living next door to me. Um, on any given night of the year, that is a hotel. I don't believe it's unreasonable to ask council to consider that one separately. It is very different from all of your other applications. And, and it should be considered differently. So I'm, I'm actually begging you to please. Make my life sane again and vote on this one separately. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Hello, Gio.
Yes, we can, we can hear you, Manuel.
Uh, I, I did not speak. My brother was the one who spoke.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
Okay. Um, I, I sent an email to the ward, um, different wards, particularly mine, which I'm from ward four. I'm a longtime, a local resident, also a property owner. I have also worked cleaning these Airbnb's in Fort Davis, Martha and Alpine. And I can tell you. Uh, that this is basically a hotelification, motelification of your towns. Uh, they will basically, uh, be detrimental to your neighborhoods. And I, um, basically, as the other gentleman spoke, uh, would at least. Ask the council to give the other residents that live here a chance to voice their opinions on how they feel about this. Uh, but the towns themselves, uh, need to wake up because, uh, this is something that is becoming a problem because if you're a home. A property owner in particular, uh, to some extent, you will be, your voice will be shut down in some form. And the detriment needs to be looked into, uh, especially from the different parties. And what I mean by parties, uh, when people come in to have, um, large groups that show up. Um, in the past, there have been anything from shootings to whatever other types of nuisances that, uh, need to be looked at by the city council as well. Uh, on different levels as well as, uh, insurance and, uh, what type of guarantees for the local communities. That these places will not just be someplace that gets used, used up or run down the neighborhood in some form. So, uh, at least those are some things that I, I think need to be looked at. And I thank you for your time.
Uh, mayor, we have one more resident who'd like to make a comment.
My name is Alberto Cavasus. I'm, uh, letter C on the list here. My wife and I have an Airbnb on West Doral Street. I believe it's in, uh, Ward four. Um, Betty lives across the street from my Airbnb. And, uh, listening to these detrimental comments concerning short term rentals. Um, we arrived in Alpine about ten years ago. We came in an R V. We worked camp at, uh, Lost Alaskan a couple of years. We saw a tremendous influx of visitors to this, uh, city. We saw people come in from all over the world. They come in with these rental RVs. They came from, well, all different countries. Surprised the hell out of them. Anyway, my wife decided you're gonna stay here. I wanted to move on. She decided to make friends. She would not leave. And I didn't mind too much because I hope it wasn't. We eventually purchased a home here in Alpine. Then a house came up, two houses down for sale. We purchased it, started an Airbnb about two and a half years ago. We've had. Fully booked. We started one night minimum, but we were cleaning every other night. Every other day, so we extended. Anyway, we cleaned up that property. It took us two months to get. Up to Airbnb standards. We cleaned it up, we repainted it. We've recently invested six thousand dollars to upgrade the air conditioning in that building. We have followed all the rules. As soon as we heard about the hot tags, my wife came down, paid it. Started paying. She pays it, uh, every three months. We follow all the rules, fill out your multi place application. We turned it in. We have a million dollars in insurance on the property, for proper insurance, which specializes in short term rentals. And it's a home, fully serviced, two bedrooms. And we only allow four people to come in. Sometimes it creates extra keys, but definitely it is a single. It's an R one and the single families are logical. And quite, we've never had anything for super hosts. But you will see in all the reviews is very clean. Cleaned up the place, the outside, the inside, everything, up and down. And we've welcomed a lot of people. And we are an advantage, a positive advantage to this city.
Right, um, mayor just texted me, he lost his connection. Okay, Chris's call for the question.
So, uh, the motion on the table is to approve the special use permit. Applications for all the items under item eight, uh, A through N. Uh, and we've had a, uh, call for the question. Uh, so, uh, unless someone wants from council wants to make comment, we'll go ahead and hold the vote. Uh, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye or raise your hand. So we have, uh, and since I'm acting, I can't vote. So we have. So we have, and since I'm acting, I can't vote. So we have.
One, two, three. And Maria, what's your vote?
My hand's up.
Okay.
So three.
Four, Betty up?
Betty was up.
Okay, so the motion passes four to zero. So continuing on, the last item we have, our city council member of comments or, or discussions. Let me start with Ward one, Maria.
Um, I don't really have any comments, other than that was, that was a lot of discussion this evening.
Okay. Chris?
There was a lot of discussion. I just want to say that there are no winners tonight. Although it does not feel like it, I do hear you. I hear the neighbors. And I promise that I will do what I can to help the council come up with ordinances that will address some of your issues. But I do feel that the STR owners do also have their rights. So I pledge to work with the STR owners and the neighbors to come up with a solution that I'm hoping will be good for everybody. But I just wanted to show you that I do care of the neighbors.
So Betty?
Well, I think we had a good meeting tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Martine? Okay.
So, yeah, there are no easy answers on the short-term rental discussion. And as I voiced earlier, I think we, and I say we, as a community, have a fair amount of work to do to sort through what's the right game plan going forward. And it's gonna require us as a community to spend time on that. I've, since this is my last meeting, I will not be sitting on council. But I've already commented, I am prepared to continue to engage on this subject. Because I'll tell you, even though Jared Johnson's coming on board to replace me and I'll have him go next week, Jared and I are meeting on Thursday, and this is gonna be one of the important discussions on this. And many of the short-term rentals happen to be, and the long-term rentals happen to be in Ward five. Because the history has been that when the university and all the buildings got put in, people started building casitas, for whatever reason, they eventually got run out. And, you know, one could argue that that should have been addressed way back when, when those got put in place. But we have a lot of things that got grandfathered around here, and we got some work to go do. I, I, I would offer, particularly when it comes to information and sharing. You know, what I don't want to do is find ourselves in a war of words. He said, she said, they did, they did that. I think we all need to back down a bit relative to getting the police called or whatever, because I think there's pros and cons on both sides. But I also do believe we're gonna need to spend some time fairly quickly addressing, you know, what makes sense relative to trash and lighting and noise and, you know, parking and all the other things that I talked to. And I think we council on this and working at that thus far. So that's the comment I'd make about short-term rentals. Since this is my last meeting, and I've been on council now six years and nine months. And I firmly believe that one of our responsibilities as citizens and residents is to engage and be part of the governance process. As evidenced by tonight, it is not easy. And I don't think it's gonna get any easier unless we all take the time to try and hear each other and then figure out what's the way and the plan that we'll follow. What many who've come to Alpine, I'm a transplant, my wife was born and raised here. I, and we made Alpine home. It's gonna continue to be our home because we think it's the right place to be. We love the city and we're gonna continue to engage and evolve. But I will not do it from here. I will do it from whatever I can to support council and the work that you all have to do. Again, because I believe it's our, beyond our civic responsibility, it's the responsibility that we have as residents of a community. If I was to live it out in some, you know, ranch 50 miles south, that'd be a whole different story. But I choose to live in a community, and that's part of what we do when we live in a community. So I want to thank all of you for allowing me to serve. And I want to thank you ahead of time for the right discussions that we'll have going forward relative to our community. I'd also like to use this opportunity, because I won't have the time again, to publicly thank the city staff, starting with Eric in chief, and Megan, and Scott, and Eddie. And we heard from tonight Adalina, and Jennifer, and Johnny, and Randy, and I'm missing a whole bunch of folks. But we have been blessed with people who could, who might be able to make and probably would make more money elsewhere, but they have come to be civil servants and serve Alpine. And I don't think we could do any better than what we have here. So I want to publicly thank all of them. I happened to meet another one of our new employees today. My sister lives out in Sunday Glen, and I finally figured out where the Roberts Well was. I had no idea where it was. And there were two employees out there, and I said, what the heck are you doing out here? Well, we're checking one of the wells. And I said, what well's out here? They said Roberts Well. I said, great, I just learned something new. Because we all have the opportunity to learn something about our community. And the more we listen to each other, the better off we'll be. So my sincere thanks to all of you and the opportunity to be able to serve that. The only other item that we have on the agenda is, since we have no executive session, is there someone like to make a motion to adjourn? So we have a motion. Is there a second? So we have a second. Is there anyone who'd like to object? Here are none. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.